Everybody ain't ready? Yeah, go ahead. Give me my cheat sheet. All right, call the regular session of the town council meeting to order. Please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all men and women.
All right, remain standing. Pastor David Iverson, are you here? Thank you for coming forward with the invocation. Good evening.
Let's bow our heads. Father, we thank you that we come before you with open hearts and yet bowed hearts before you, knowing that you are the God of all wisdom, the God of all counsel. We thank you, Father, that we can honor you, that this community honors you, Lord. Thank you, Father, that we can trust tonight that the same qualities and things, Lord, that you possess, we can have. Passion and compassion, Father, for things within this town that are important to us, Father. We ask that you would give wisdom to those before us tonight, that you would guide them and direct them, Lord, that you would bless them, Lord, for serving. We pray for this community, Father. We know, Lord, it'll be blessed. As people, Lord, honor you. Thank you for the generosity of the people that live here, Lord, and just the integrity and the quality, Lord, of people that call Fountain Hills their home. We ask, Lord, that you would just continue to pour out your blessings and, Lord, that as you breathed into man and man became a living soul, that you would continue to breathe your life into this town, Lord, and that, Father, we would live many, many years, Lord, here in blessing and in prosperity, Lord, in Jesus' name. Amen.
Thank you, Pastor Iverson, from Fountain Hills Christian Center. All right, welcome. Thanks for a nice crowd showing up tonight. Appreciate your interest in the items on the agenda. And let me mention, the first thing here is that we have item number two on the agenda that probably has a lot of folks' attention out there on the consent agenda, and that's the STS item. And let me make a comment here before we get started, is that that consent item number two is relating to the termination of the agreement between the Town of Fountain Hills and Maricopa County for special transportation services. This is merely a formality. No discussion can be entered into because the county board of supervisors voted to eliminate the program at the county level, which means that the service is no longer an option for the town. Any citizens wishing to comment on the town's proposed volunteer transportation program are welcome to do so during the discussion item, which is item number seven. So we welcome your comments on item number seven. For those that are here to speak to that item, I just wanted to clarify that the STS program is not a town program, as most of you probably know, just to clarify, that's a program that the county has ended, and the town obviously cannot continue that program as it is because it's a county program. So we'll have more discussion, as I said, on the regular agenda item number seven. So we welcome your comments then, and we'll move on. All right, first items, we have some presentations. We're going to keep these all brief. Appreciate staff and Mr. Kane from Transportation Planning from HGR to keep all of our presentations short so we can get to what most of people are here to see, but we welcome you first up, Joan McIntosh.
Mayor.
Yes.
Roque.
Oh, I'm sorry. Thank you. I skipped that. Thank you. Roque, Bev.
Mayor Schlumpf.
Here.
Councilmember Dickey.
Here.
Councilmember Oshambo.
Here.
Councilmember Hanson.
Here.
Councilmember Leger.
Here.
Councilmember Cantino.
Here.
Councilmember Brown is absent.
Do I need to repeat my clarifying comments now on? All right. All right, now we'll move on to Joan McIntosh, our HR Director. Thank you very much for being here, Joan.
You're welcome. Thank you, Mayor and Councilmembers. I think all of you know me, but I want to introduce myself for the benefit of the public and the audience here tonight. My name's Joan McIntosh, and I'm the Human Resources Administrator and the Risk Manager for the Town of Fountain Hills. There are five responsibilities of the human resource position, five main responsibilities, and I just want to quickly review some of these two so that people are familiar. The first responsibility is that I write the policies and procedures. I develop and implement policies and procedures for town employees. This fosters a positive work environment by making sure that the policies are fair and equitable and consistent. After these policies are written, they're presented to the council for adoption, and then they become known as the Town Manual that all employees receive a copy of, as well as all council members when they come on board. The second responsibility is for employee benefits and benefit administration. I work closely with our insurance broker, which is TM Richardson Company, to provide the best health, dental, vision, life, and disability insurances that we can for our employees. Depending on the premium increase that we get each year, we may go out to bid each year to make sure that we get the best benefit for the least cost, so we stay on top of that on an annual basis. I also work closely with our ICMA representative, which is our retirement plan, to make sure that we stay legal and work with their legal department with the retirement plan, as well as assist employees when they separate from service to make sure that they have the proper paperwork for their retirement. I keep employees informed regarding our Employee Assistance Plan, and for those of you that may not be familiar with that, this is a program that the town offers its employees and its family members. It's free to them. And what it is, it's a short-term counseling benefit, so for instance, if there was something that happened in their life, maybe a loss of a loved one, or maybe they're having difficult problems with a teenage child that's affecting their home life or something, we can say, you know, you're welcome to go to the Employee Assistance Program and seek counseling The third responsibility is for recruitment and overseeing the selection, advancement, retention, and separation of employees. For recruitment, I write the ads for open positions and, of course, place them in publications. And then I also do the classification and compensation. I perform an annual compensation study to determine what our market relationship is, and our goal is always to be competitive within the market because this enables us to retain our current employees and also to recruit new employees. And I determine the appropriate level of compensation and classification for town The fifth responsibility is employee relations, and this is probably the area where I spend the majority of my time. I facilitate positive employer relations with all the employee groups. I advise and counsel employees if they're having any problems at work, or even sometimes with their home life. And I work with the supervisors, counseling them regarding their employees or their staff, and it could be for either positive or negative situation that's going on with them. I process employee grievances, but I can honestly say that in my nine-and-a-half years that I've been here, I've not had one, so I don't have to involve or include too much hours in that, which I think speaks a lot for the town, that our employees get along well and we haven't had any grievances filed. In case there are any complaints filed about sexual harassment or hostile work environment, anything like that, I would conduct an internal investigation, and I've had to do that about three times since I've been here. I also coordinate the family and medical leave and disability claims for our employees. I oversee the volunteer coordinator, and I didn't put this on the PowerPoint, but I process the biweekly payroll for all the town staff. The second hat that I wear is that of Risk Manager for the Town of Fountain Hills, and that position involves administering and participating in the development of the town's risk management program. I serve as the co-chair for the Loss Control Committee at Southwest Risk, who is our risk pool, insurance pool, and we meet on a quarterly basis. I evaluate all the insurance policies for the town, including the auto coverage, our property coverage, our general liability coverage, and evaluate any loss exposure, potential loss, that we might have to determine what risks we have, and then, of course, try to remedy those risks. I coordinate the processing and settlement of all claims with the appropriate parties, such as workers' compensation claims that would happen to our staff, any damages to town property, for example, if a resident or visitor to our community had an auto accident and maybe damaged some of our median landscaping or something like that, where there were some damages incurred, I would process that claim, as well as any personal property damage. I also coordinate the wellness and safety training for our town employees. And with that, I will answer any questions that you may have.
Thank you very much, Joan. I want to comment that your team and you do a great job. I know you have help from different folks at different times, but, yeah, you mentioned nine-and-a-half years and really not any significant employee issues, so that's kudos to you, and we want to thank you for, one, keeping the town compliant and out of legal trouble related to employees, mitigating the risk, as you just mentioned, and for caring so much about the employees as you do, because I think that probably goes a long ways to keeping, to staying on top of things. But you also did a great job in managing and saving our town money and getting our Town Manager search put together and handled that all in-house and...
Yeah, that's your only failure.
Yeah.
That's pretty good. That's a great batting effort.
But you also keep the council up to date on things related to employees' pay and trending around the area as well, so appreciate it. Any questions or comments for Joan? Thank you very much.
You're very welcome. Thank you.
Next report is from Julie Getty, our Deputy Town Manager, on our town's fiscal report for the first nine months of this fiscal year, ending March 31, '09. Welcome.
Thank you, Mayor. Let me just bring it up. The agenda says the period ending March 31st, but I wanted to make sure that I gave the council the latest information, so it's actually as of the end of April. As the council is aware, there's a lag period between the time when we get the revenues. There's about a three- or four-week lag time for when we get the revenues for the month. So this is actually the latest information that we have, which is as the end of April. For our general fund, which is our general operating fund, you can see that compared to the budget, our revenues are down $1.2 million. Compared to last year, they're down $1.6 million. So the chart that you see on the left shows the major sources of revenue. Forty-three percent of our revenue comes from state shared revenue, and forty-seven percent comes from our local sales tax. So that's 90% of our revenue comes from those two revenue sources. This chart is the chart of the major revenue sources, and you can see the bars on all the way to the left are last fiscal year, the bars in the middle are this current year, and the bars to the right, the dark blue, are the budget. And you can see that the two areas where we are under budget is the state sales tax and the other. The other includes building permits and interest earnings, so those are the two areas where we are under budget. Our local sales tax collection, the construction sales tax is up about 200%. That's primarily due to the lag, again, of when building permits come in and when the actual construction takes place, so this is the area that we expect will slow down over the next couple of years as the building permits, which we have, has been lagging significantly this year. Our construction sales tax, 85% of that goes over to the Capital Projects Fund, so only 15% is available in the general fund for spending. Our retail is up 23% to the budget, but that's because the way the revenues come in for our local sales taxes is during our busy time, meaning from December, January, February, and March, so by the end of the fiscal year, we should have what we budgeted in retail sales tax. It won't be up quite that much. To match the revenues that we haven't been getting, we've cut our expenditures, so you can see that our general fund expenditures are down by $2.2 million, and that was due to the fact that we started very early on cutting expenses. We were worried about the economy, so we made significant adjustments to the budget starting in August and September, and so currently, we're under budget by about $2.2 million. And this is a chart of by department. You can see that almost every department, the actual being to the left, the dark blue, and the budget being to the right, the gray, that every department has contributed to cutting expenditures to meet available revenues. Our current-year projection, this current year that we're in that ends in June 30th, again, we budgeted $16.1 million in revenue, and we revised that down to about $15.1, so that difference is a million dollars. The same with expenditures, since we can only spend the money that we get, we've adjusted our expenditures down to $15.1 with the same million-dollar difference. Our general fund balance, which is our savings account, is $6.5 million, and at the end of the year, if, once the council approves the rainy day fund, we'll have $5.2 million in the general fund, but we will have $1.3 million in our rainy day fund, a separate fund, so there's no change in the fund balance. In the Highway User Fund, which is our streets fund, the revenues are down about $300,000, but our carryforward was up about $100,000, and our expenditures are down about $500,000. So at the end of the year, we projected a zero fund balance. We projected we would spend everything, but we're going to have about $300,000 left over in the streets fund. In our Economic Development Fund, our excise tax or downtown fund, again, this is our local sales tax that funds it. The revenues are up slightly to $320,000, and our carryforward from last year is up about almost $200,000, and our expenditures are just under budget, and we expect a fund balance in that fund at the end of this fiscal year of $1.1 million. Our Capital Projects Fund, we had estimated $700,000 to come in from that 85% of the local sales tax. It's projected to be closer to $1 million. And we also had budgeted transfers from other funds for capital projects of 3.4, but we are only going to be transferring about 2.5. The carryforward that we had budgeted last year was 8.9. It's actually 10.8. And again, our expenditures that we had budgeted, 5.6. We're now projecting that those expenditures in that Capital Projects Fund are going to be 4.4, with an ending fund balance at the end of this year of $9.9 million. With that, I'd be happy to answer any questions the council may have.
Thank you very much, Julie. Any questions for Julie regarding this update? Julie, great job keeping us informed regularly. You've been diligent in maintaining this fiscal year and keeping us on top of things, making dramatic decreases in spending, but maintaining, helping the town to maintain a quality of life in light of declining revenues and keeping our budget balanced and preparing us for next year, which will be even more difficult, as we know. But I think probably all appreciate the fact that our fund balances are, for the most part, growing outside of our capital improvement, and which equates to more or less savings. So in light of a downturn economy, we're doing a, you're keeping us on top of our budget and appreciate that.
Thank you, Mayor.
Anything else? Thank you very much. All right. Mr. Ward, we have a presentation from HGR.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. Yes, we do. With us tonight is Steve Sherwick, and I know your agenda is Brent Kane. Brent could not be with us tonight, and so Steve is here. He's a project manager on this project, and we just, these plans for this project are at 30% completion, and this is a very large project. We thought it might be a good idea to periodically give you updates on our projects that are so large and help you understand where we're at and what we've accomplished and where we're headed. So I'll turn it over to Steve and let him have at it.
Thanks, Tom. Welcome, Steve. Look for a good brief presentation here. Appreciate you coming out.
I do have about a...
We received your presentation, so we have reviewed it, but appreciate you being here tonight.
Okay. The presentation runs about 10 or 12 minutes, but I can do it in four minutes so I hit the high points.
All right. Perfect. We have them all online, too, so four minutes is great.
All right, we'll go that route. Our Shea Boulevard, Saguaro Boulevard project is really in two phases. The first phase is a study phase that was conducted by our planning group.
We've got your wrong presentation up there. You can keep talking while we get the right one up there.
I do. I did.
Unless you're looking to increase the size of a light pole in Desert Vista Park, I don't think that's your...
But the two phases in the project, the first phase is a study phase that was conducted by our planning group at HGR, and part of that planning process is they come up with recommendations to improve the intersection, thanks, Tom, to improve the intersection so it operates better in the future. I don't know what happened. There he goes. All right. Okay. We just recently submitted the final study report to the town on April 30th, and with the submittal of that report, it pretty much culminates the first phase of the project, and now we're moving into the second phase, which is design. And we've worked pretty close with Tom and Randy over the last year in getting this improvement study completed and submitted. And I think I'm going to skip ahead in the presentation here and hit the recommendations that were developed out of the study phase of the project.
We promise not to comment on right-turn lanes, and we can usually get pretty involved here.
We're actually adding quite a few right-turn lanes. This slide right here is basically a summary of the recommendations that came out of the study phase, and I have them superimposed on a graphic that we can take a look at here. It might be kind of difficult to see some of the details.
Saguaro and Shea Boulevard there, Circle K and McDonald's.
Right. Shea Boulevard is the up-down street here, Saguaro's the left-to-right street, Circle K is on the corner, of course. The recommendations that came out of the report, these aren't in any particular order of importance, but the first one, the number-one bullet item there on Shea Boulevard, represents the construction of a brand-new westbound through lane on Shea Boulevard that would extend from the intersection of Saguaro and Shea all the way past Technology Drive. Right now, there's three eastbound lanes on Shea Boulevard and only two westbound lanes. We would add the third westbound up past Technology Drive, where it will match into a future development on Shea Boulevard. The second bullet item is a very important one there. It shows that we would be adding another left turn lane off of Shea onto Saguaro. Right now, there's a single left turn lane, and with the traffic projections that we show for the year 2030, which is what we designed to, 20 years in the future, it shows that we would need a dual left turn lane at that location, and it would need to be lengthened above and beyond what the single lane is now, so that's what the number-two improvement is. Number three on Saguaro Boulevard indicates a dedicated right turn lane for people on Saguaro to turn right on the Trevino extension that goes east of Saguaro, and that dedicated lane actually can perhaps double also as a bus turnout in the future in case there's a stop at that location. The fourth improvement would be adding a southbound right turn lane on Saguaro Boulevard so people can make their right turn on Trevino without inhibiting through traffic on Saguaro. The number-five item is taking the existing driveway location that goes into the Circle K development and shifting it a little further to the west for two reasons. One, it moves it a little further away from the Shea-Saguaro intersection, which is a plus. Additionally, the relocated location, it's a straight shot through the parking lot, through another access point from the parking lot on the Trevino, and it should help the circulation in the parking lot there. The number-six improvement is adding another right turn lane, dedicated right turn lane on westbound Shea Boulevard, so the traffic can access that new relocated driveway as well as the driveway to McDonald's a little further to the west. Number seven is the addition of a dedicated right turn lane from Saguaro Boulevard southbound onto westbound Shea Boulevard. And the eighth improvement is perhaps one of the most important features that we're adding. We have dual lefts right now on Saguaro that go onto Shea Boulevard. With the 2030 traffic projections, we would need to extend the length of those dual lefts significantly, and that's what's shown there is improvement number eight. Number nine would be, wouldn't involve any real construction work, but it's right at the corner there near the Denny's driveway. Basically, we would just dedicate the right-most lane as a right turn lane, and we have a right turn signal, arrow on the signal. It really wouldn't involve much physical work, but it would dedicate that lane for a right turn lane. Those are a summary of the improvements that we intend to go forward with, and like I stated, we're pretty much just getting underway, approaching the 30% design to starting in June. So with that, I'd be glad to answer any questions you might have.
Steve, that was a good overview of a big project that's about to be undertaken. And any questions regarding this project, Steve? Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
And Tom, and this is, and Julie, perhaps, the funding here, this is again, this is a 70-30 funded project through MAG, where we're providing 30% of the funding, and MAG's providing 70%. Thank you. Thank you very much. All right. Do we have any speaker cards here?
No, Mayor.
Those are all on items?
Item number seven.
Good. Thank you. All right, move into the consent agenda. Look for a motion to approve the consent agenda as listed. So move.
Second.
Can I get a roll call, Bev?
Councilmember Cantino.
Aye.
Councilmember Hanson.
Aye.
Councilmember Leger.
Aye.
Councilmember Dickey.
I'm sorry.
This is roll call for consent.
Aye.
Mayor Schlumpf.
Aye.
And Councilmember Oshambo.
Aye.
Mayor 6-0.
Thank you very much. I wanted to mention earlier, forgot, Councilmember Dennis Brown is not here tonight. That's why we had a 6-0 vote here out of the gate. He's had a long-time planned vacation or trip. He would, that worked well with his planning and zoning calendar, but now that he's on council, it didn't, we're on opposite weeks, so he would be here if he could. That's why our newest council member is not here this evening, at least. Move on to our regular agenda now. We first have a discussion with possible directions to staff regarding the Town of Fountain Hills tentative budget for this next fiscal year, 2009, 2010, and I just asked that this be on the agenda for us to have further discussion, public input on how we're doing and where we're at with our budget. We expect to adopt a budget at a subsequent meeting, so, but it's an item that I think we had some good discussion on, but thought that if council members took away other questions or comments they wanted to discuss during a public meeting, that we'd have opportunity to do so here tonight. So that's all I'm doing, is opening it up for dialogue. Councilmember, hello.
Thank you. Mayor, might I suggest that we take item number seven before the budget discussion, since I think a lot of...
Good. Good. You suggested that earlier, and I think that's great. Is that all right, Andrew, if I, we go back to six after seven?
Mr. Mayor, it's at the pleasure of the council, so if there's no objection, you can shut it down.
All right, with that, good. Thank you. Thanks for that reminder. Councilmember Hanson. All right, we're going to go to item number seven, which is what most of you are here for. Update relating to the town's volunteer special transportation services program for current riders of the Maricopa County Special Transportation Services Program with possible directions to staff regarding contracting with an outside agency to provide special transportation services for current residents who participate in daily adult daycare programs. Welcome, Joan.
Thank you, Mayor. I'm here this evening to talk a little bit about what we've been doing to help transition the special transportation services that the county ran. They have notified the riders of Fountain Hills that they will be discontinuing that service effective June 30th of this year. STS currently, and STS stands for Special Transportation Services. It currently serves 22 residents in Fountain Hills on a regular basis, and by that I mean anywhere from one trip per week to 13 trips per week, but they all go on a weekly basis. Six of those 22 residents use the STS services Monday through Friday to attend, and in my PowerPoint, I have that it's an adult daycare center, but that's a little misleading. I've been finding out more and more information as we've been researching some of these options, and I checked into what the Stars program is or the adult daycare, and they're really actually day treatment and training programs, so they're much more than just an adult daycare. They actually teach the, their clients maybe how to use eating utensils, how to spend money, how to go shopping, how to develop adult relationships, and really how to be more independent than what they currently are. So they serve a greater service than just an adult daycare. And the remaining use of the STS services is for medical appointments, recreational, and personal business. And in addition to those 22 that serve, that ride the bus on a regular basis, there's another 12 residents in Fountain Hills that are more on an occasional basis, maybe, you know, once or twice a month, three times a month. So a committee was formed at the request of our town manager and council to try to research some viable alternatives to the current STS program for our residents. The committee members, the committee consists of Rick Davis, our town manager, Heather Ware, who's our volunteer coordinator, myself, and volunteer people... who's our volunteer coordinator, myself, and volunteer people Bruce Florence, Jim Judge, Mary Mapes, and Bill Whittaker. And they were all very productive in helping us research our different options and visit a lot of the current STS riders. We first checked with some of the local jurisdictions to see if there was any options there that could help us out. We checked with Fountain View Village to see if there was any chance that maybe we could rent their van or come up with some kind of agreement with them. And they talked to their board and their legal and determined that they did not want to do it because of liability issues, and they only have so many transportation vehicles, and they were afraid that, you know, somebody else would tie them up when they needed them. So they weren't willing to come to any agreement with the Town of Fountain Hills. We also checked with Red Cross, because we know that they used to come into Fountain Hills, and they kind of went away once the STS program started and was replaced by STS. However, they too said it was too cost prohibitive for the number of people that are in Fountain Hills that would use their services to come back into town. The Stars program is the one that I spoke about, which is the day treatment and training program. I talked to them about possibly, because they have five of these riders that go to their Stars program, if they had a vehicle and they would be willing to come into Fountain Hills, if maybe we had some money, we could help subsidize them to do that. They also talked to their board and determined that they could not do it because they would have to purchase another vehicle, and they would also have to hire a driver to do that, and they just didn't have the funds to be able to do that. And then we checked with Dial Ride, which does go as far as Mayo Clinic, but that's for Scottsdale residents. And we did inquire to see whether they'd be willing to come into Fountain Hills. They will, but it will cost $65 an hour. So I think that would be cost prohibitive for the town to provide that type of service. We clearly understand that any program that the town is able to provide will not replace the STS services. A town program will be volunteer-based initiative where riders are matched with volunteers in most cases, not in all cases. We must decide with the council's direction who we can serve on a long-term basis and who we can serve on a transitional basis. Valley Metro has, in my presentation here, at that time, they were currently trying to put together a program for us, and we learned earlier this week, after I submitted this information, that they have in fact put together a program. And it might be a viable program, that's up to the council, but they, we gave them the mileage for each rider that goes on a daily basis, or at least two or three times a week, and outside of the town limits. And they came up with a cost, an annual cost, based on mileage and gasoline and things like that, and it was approximately $67,000 on an annual basis. That's much less expensive than what STS was charging us or that we were subsidizing, and that would provide transportation for approximately 10 of our regular users. We also hopefully have about $35,000 of LTAS funds that will be available. We know that this is a grant that's not available until October. We have to apply for it, and we're very optimistic that we would receive that money. We've always have in the past, but again, it's not a given. So the committee members that I mentioned earlier, we met on a regular basis, and we also went out in teams and met with each of the current riders to assess their needs. And we decided, or determined that all current riders will be taken care of first. In other words, if there's other community members that may want to take advantage of any service that we can provide, they would either be put on a waiting list, or maybe we wouldn't be able to serve them at all. But we certainly wanted to take care of the current STS riders first and make sure that they weren't left out there without any transportation. We thought we'd call the program Give a Lift, and want to stress that this is not a public transportation program. It is a volunteer program for the most part. The way that we would recruit volunteers, and we started doing this somewhat already, is put an announcement in the avenues, and Katie has already done that, explaining the Give a Lift program, press release, put it on our website, Channel 11, in our volunteer newsletter, and perhaps put it in church bulletins and maybe be able to recruit some of the volunteer church organizations in town. The logistics entail recruitment and training of the volunteers, so this will take a little time once we are able to match up a volunteer with somebody in the community that has need for transportation. The volunteers will use their own vehicle, and we have discussed possibly providing a stipend to the volunteers to encourage them to participate in this program. For example, if, and it would be based on their participation, for example, if they volunteered 10 times a month to provide transportation for somebody needy in Fountain Hills, we might give them a stipend of maybe $50, or that hasn't been determined yet, but a dollar amount to help them with their gasoline cost. And if they only volunteered five times a month, it would maybe be $25 a month, or something like that, to help them with any costs that they would incur. And any transportation for the volunteer program that would be outside of the Town of Fountain Hills would only be to the nearest transit stop, which is that Mayo Clinic. That's the volunteer part of it, would only go that far. Rides for any medical appointments, shopping, recreation and social will be provided, but the most needy will be our priority. So if they have medical appointments, I mean, obviously, we'd want to serve those before somebody that wanted to just go to socialize. And our volunteers' auto insurance, this has been some of the questions that we've received from some of our volunteers, is that what would their liability be? Their auto insurance would be the primary coverage, and if, for instance, there was a lawsuit, if they were in a car accident or something, and the damages went beyond what their limits were, their auto coverage, then the town would take over the remaining responsibility of that claim. And I have verified that with our insurance company. We would be able to provide that in writing to any of our volunteers who want to participate in this program. The rollout, our goal is to be by July 1st for the volunteer program. We still have a lot of work to do before then, just to make sure that we can recruit enough volunteers to match the needs of the people that have transportation requests within the town limits. I think if we were able to contract with an outside agency with the people that go outside of Fountain Hills on a regular basis, that could happen pretty quickly if funds were available. After some direction from the council, Katie Decker would develop a logo for this program, the Give a Lift program, and do some marketing and education out in the public. And this is an ongoing program, so we're just in the preliminary stages. We haven't had much time to put a lot of things together, so we'll have to make adjustments and accommodation and additions as needed. We know that. This isn't perfect by any means. And with that, I will answer any questions that any members may have.
Good. Thank you very much, Joan, for jumping on this, and thanks to the volunteers on the committee for quickly jumping on this, given that we all didn't get a great deal of notice from our county STS program canceling and leaving us in this position at this time. But just to clarify, I would like to get to the public comments here. But if you would clarify the Give a Lift program versus STS. The constraints on the Give a Lift at this time, the logistics page you went over is to take people around Fountain Hills on a volunteer basis, and as far as Mayo Clinic. Is that correct?
That's correct.
So this would not replace STS?
No.
Or those, particularly this 10 folks or so that are going on a pretty regular basis down for the training or daycare, those needs? This is not that program?
That is correct.
Good. Just want to clarify that. Any questions for, thank you. Councilmember Hanson?
Thank you, Mayor. Joan, could you speak a little bit more to the Valley Metro program? You said that that would be for about 10 people.
Yes.
How would you determine which 10 people are? Are they the ones that need to go further into the valley?
Those are the ones that go outside of the town limits on a regular basis, like the ones that go to the Stars program that I talk about. We have some other residents that go pretty much on a daily basis for medical appointments, either down to like Shea and 92nd Street, or some of them go as far down to St. Joseph's Hospital once or twice a week for treatments. So it would be those types of people that need transportation, and they go outside of the town limits.
Thank you.
And so it would be those 10 people, there's about 10 people that that would include.
Thanks, Mayor.
Thank you, Mayor. Joan, would that particular metro program, is that a special bus, or would they just be getting on regular city?
It would only be for ambulatory riders, meaning that if, doesn't mean that they're not in a wheelchair necessarily, but if they're able to get to the bus and transfer from the wheelchair onto the, into the vehicle, and then maybe fold their wheelchair and put that on, and then get back in it when they get to their location. So it's for them. Anybody that is, you know, wheelchair-bound, that can't get out of it, they can provide services for that also. There's only about three or four, to my understanding, that that includes, and they did include that in their cost. It's just a higher, what they call, a load rate, you know, to help them get onto the, into the vehicle, and the mileage is a little higher for those people than it is for ambulatory people. But they, yes, it does include them, and they can provide the transportation for them.
Okay. Thank you. Councilmember Dickey?
Mayor, thanks. Joan, I have a question about the Valley Metro, the Dial Ride. If we were members of Valley Metro, would it be less expensive if the town were a member?
From what they explained to me, is that, because I called the city of Scottsdale, I know they have Dial Ride, and what their transportation director told me there is that, you know, they're mandated to have Dial Ride because they have an established bus route. So they're federally mandated to have Dial Ride within a certain distance, I guess, from the bus stops. Because Fountain Hills doesn't have an established bus route, we're not mandated, and we wouldn't get the negotiated rates that are identified with that. Instead, we would have to pay the hourly rate, and they quoted that, Dial Ride did. Valley Metro, but Dial Ride quoted that to be $65 an hour. And with the people that were in town limits, that probably wouldn't cost that much. It's those that have to go outside of town limits, it would be very costly to do that. So I don't know that if we've become members of it, I don't know. They didn't tell us about that, so I don't know if that's an option, but we can check into it.
Okay. Thank you, Mayor, because that was just something that even without this issue coming up, that we haven't had an opportunity to really look at, but if you are a member of Valley Metro, maybe there are other things that go along with that, including, I know we're looking into the future on actually getting some bus service in here, and I wonder if that would benefit that, and obviously, that would be another budget item, short cost to join, but I, maybe that is something we could take a look at, too, in conjunction with all this.
Well, certainly, if we do get a bus service in Fountain Hills, then we too will be mandated to provide that ride for our residents, so.
We do have an express service, but not a regularly, not a loop service or whatever it may be called. Any other comments? Councilmember Legay?
Joan, what type of qualifications do the Valley Metro drivers have?
The riders?
Not the riders, the drivers.
The drivers. They, right now, they just have to be over age of 25, and they have to have a valid Arizona driver's license, and they check their driving record and, of course, do a background check on them, and they have to have a clear driving record for five to seven years.
And for this type of program that Valley Metro is putting together, are there any other types of training or qualifications for dealing with particularly non-ambulatory folks?
There are not with Valley Metro, but we could certainly provide that if we thought it was necessary.
Okay. Thank you.
Do you believe that it'd be similar qualifications that the STS currently has, the county?
Yes.
Okay. Councilmember Dickey?
One more question. The, some of these programs that we're looking at, if it was possible to get more people served if there was a slight co-pay, would that be something that any of these, well, first of all, the folks that you spoke to, is it anything that's within the realm of possibility that there could be some kind of a co-pay? And are any of these programs set up so that just some small amount that might help expand even, like, more than 10 people or something like that?
Well, we certainly could charge a co-pay, I mean, like with the Dial Ride, they would have to pay a co-pay of, you know, I think it's a dollar seventy-five, or depending on what zone they're going to, there's different charges for that. But we certainly could, you know, charge a co-pay for that, that's an option to do that, and then it would lower our costs a little bit. Would have to be, the clients that we talked to, pretty much all of them have indicated that they're willing to pay something, but they're all on fixed incomes, and they can't afford a lot. So it might be some co-pay, but it wouldn't be a huge amount. But that's certainly an option, too. We could do that.
What I'd like to do is get to the public who are largely here, from the folks I spoke to, because they are either users, or they're families or friends of users with concerns with the STS program specifically going away from the county at the end of this month, to give them opportunity to come forward. I know we have quite a few cards, so Joan, we'll probably get more to the volunteer program, because I'm very excited about that, and to talk more about that. Councilmember Cantino?
Joan, can you tell us how many people actually go outside of Fountain Hills that need our services, or that are using STS services?
Right. Now, there's about 10 of them.
Just only 10?
Only 10.
Okay. And the other ones are local?
Yes. And more sporadic, you know, they have a medical appointment here in town, or a dentist appointment, or maybe they want to go to the community center, but they don't have transportation or groceries, or things like that, but they're more sporadic. The 10 are a regular, weekly ride, or some of them five days a week, and they all go outside of town limits.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor. So let's get to the public comments, and what I was going to ask is that, when you hear comments you were going to share, share it already. Try not to be, to repeat that, but we want to hear your concerns, your comments. So we've got about 12 speakers.
We have 12 speaker cards. One did not wish to speak, but she wanted to let the council know she was in supportive agenda, item number seven. The first speaker is Mary Pilarinos.
All right. Or sometimes when there's a lot of speakers, welcome, Mary. If you, if there are any that just wish to say I support what was said before, feel free to do that as well. Welcome.
Thank you. Thank you, Mayor, council. My name is Mary Pilarinos. I have some comments to make, and then I have an offering of a solution, maybe. First of all, according to our newspaper, Fountain Hills has made the list of the best and affluent, the best and affluent community in which to live. And if that's true, it seems to me we have to find a solution to this critical issue. For instance, in the budget, according to the budget, there's a balance of, and pardon my naivete about budgets and finances, I know about that much, but I did read through the budget as best I could. There's a balance of about $1,310,254 allotted to a rainy day fund. Well, it's raining now, and I wonder if any of those funds could be used towards this issue. Also, there's a mission statement written into the budget, which says the mayor and the town council are charged with serving the best interests of the community, respecting its quality of life, providing superior public service. Well, how can this mission still be true, based on what we're going through, and if we do lose out on some kind of a special van or some special services for these people? I don't know how that mission statement could still apply. There are a number of quotes I have, line item, line item expenses totaling over $760,000 that are allotted to community events, advertising, signage, promotion, community affairs, et cetera. Maybe they could be used, or part of this money could be used, or can it possibly be diverted towards this cause? And how about sacrificing any of the special events that are in the budget for purposes of promoting our small-town character, like extravaganza, Kiwanis Pancake breakfast, luminarias, Thanksgiving Day Parade? Can we do away with these for temporarily, on a temporary basis and use that money towards this special need? And the community center, I noticed in the budget, has a van that they use for outings and trips that they get from Valley Metro for $1. That's cute. Can that van be put instead to use for these special services? And finally, I did speak also with the American Red Cross, because I was one of the people who signed, people who signed up for getting this service into Fountain Hills. They have discontinued serving Fountain Hills. They do have an area in Prescott, but that doesn't do anything for us. However, they have a van. They have a van that's sitting in their parking lot that is for sale. If anyone's interested, I have the name of the person and the phone number to use. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Pilarinos. It's good to have you come forward with some solutions, too, because that's where it's going to come from, the public and all of us working together to come up with the right solution there. Who is up next?
Joan Fiorelli.
Welcome.
Welcome. Thank you. Good evening, Mary Schlum, councilmembers and staff. My name is Joanne Fiorelli, and I have been a resident taxpayer in Fountain Hills for over 10 years. I am addressing item seven on the agenda. I am addressing item seven on the agenda, special needs transportation. First off, I, this isn't part of what you have, but I was not asked by anybody about my son's needs, so when you say that people were asked and visited, I was not, and I, and there's many others that were not, so, um, I will...
Okay, thank you.
Hold the mic, please.
Appreciate it. Thank you.
Um, I will begin by thanking all of you for allowing me the opportunity to speak on behalf of my son, Jeremy. He will be thirty years old this July, and he has cerebral palsy, which confines him to a wheelchair. Jeremy's mental capacity is unknown, but most folks who meet him will attest he's a talker and leaves a memorable impression one will not soon forget. Jeremy is quite a little man and our family's inspiration. Moreover, I am his mother, and I must fight for his needs. Jeremy has the right, as all of us, to be a part of society. He has counted on the transportation service to attend a day program and sheltered workshop in Scottsdale, the Starage Program. This allows him the time away from home, to give him independence, he learns how to interact with others, he goes on community outings to shop, see movies, and is able to be with his peers. In addition, the seniors in our community also use this service to receive outside medical services and treatment not available in Fountain Hills. The transportation service is about to end, and is so very critical and necessary to accommodate our community's special needs citizens. I believe the city has an obligation to provide a qualified transportation service, not a service provided from outside sources by probable unskilled or unqualified volunteers. Certified personnel with proper and adequate training, having passed background checks, are necessary to ensure safety, handle everyday situations, and medical emergencies should they arise. Without this service provided, it adds grief and worry to me and other caregivers, not to mention added burden of altering daily schedules, work adjustments, doctor appointments, and extending our days if we have no choice but to provide the transportation. In addition, all caregivers will more than likely incur additional financial burden in this already difficult economic time. In summary, I urge you, Mayor Schlum and councilmembers, to consider the needs of all of our community's people, and ensure the city provides these special accommodations. Thank you again for allowing me to speak.
Thank you, Ms. Fiorelli.
Mary Ann Swazin?
Thank you for this town meeting and for giving the residents of Fountain Hills a forum to be able to come to you with all of our thoughts and concerns and suggestions in regards to losing our transportation for the elderly and special needs. My name is Mary Ann Swazin. I am a resident and taxpayer in the town of Fountain Hills for over sixteen years now, and I am here this evening on behalf of my daughter, Lori. Lori has cerebral palsy and is non-ambulatory. She will be forty years old in September. I am Lori's mother, I choose to be Lori's advocate, I choose to be her voice, so that she can be heard, and because of Lori, she made me be the person that I am today. If I were to place my daughter in a group home facility, it would cost the state of Arizona around eleven thousand, six hundred dollars a month, roughly around a hundred and thirty-eight thousand dollars a year. The choice to be a caregiver for the disabled, the ill, the elderly in the home is actually much less burdensome and costly to a state, rather than placing these members of our community in group homes or nursing homes. Therefore, I rely on services that should be provided by the towns we live in. There soon will be a tidal wave of baby boomers needing care and transportation. Thirty-seven point nine million people are seniors, according to the census data released earlier this month. One in five United States residents will be sixty-five or years older by the year 2000, thirty. With these statistics, this makes the need for state oversight even more important than ever. This service is about protecting our seniors and special needs children and adults. To leave residents without transportation to critical services would be an atrocity, detrimental to the life and well-being to the most vulnerable in our community. The alternative pro, proposed by the town of Fountain Hills is unacceptable, and possibly unsafe. The town is proposing that transportation be provided by volunteers. From what I read in the Fountain Hills Times, it is my understanding that the town's goal is to sign up volunteers and match them with those who need a ride, and that volunteers would use their own vehicles and travel no further than the nearest RPTA bus stop on Shea Boulevard near Mayo Clinic. How can the town ask good Samaritans to take on the liability of transporting anyone at their own risk in their own vehicles? At one time, the Red Cross drove the town of Fountain Hills, volunteers were used. I had an incident with my daughter Lori. I was pulling into my driveway, and the man had Lori sitting on the front door as he proceeded to go back into his van and started to drive away. I told him, "You never leave a person unattended, and should always have a transfer of hands." Someone has to be there to accept the person. He was gracious and apologetic, and he then stood, said he understood, and he was sorry, but he was not thinking clearly. There are Fountain Hills residents that currently are using transportation service to go to Scottsdale for dialysis. We would be leaving in the, leaving them in the hands of untrained volunteers. What if there was a medical emergency while transporting that resident? What if the volunteer did not show up or take the person for their treatment? If people are not trained properly in regards to someone's care, things can happen. Another issue and concern would be that the driver should have an aide on the van. The aide would be able to help and handle any emergency that might occur, because the driver should never be distracted for any reason, and his or her job should be to drive because of these safety issues. There are other states that do practice these safety measures. In addition, a qualified company that is hired by our town needs to carry out criminal background checks, and drug testing, and fingerprinting on applicants. Drivers need to be screened and put through a training program. I also believe that the drivers who drive our loved ones know basic first aid and CPR. People that depend on these services need qualified transportation with staff trained in transporting special needs and clients of all kind.
Ms. Swazin? We're going to have to wrap up your comments, but please leave us with your paperwork behind, and we'll continue the discussion, obviously. We won't be done here tonight, particularly with the services you're regarding, the STS or replacement of STS. We'll continue the dialogue, but we need to continue, uh, hearing more folks tonight.
Well, there's some people here that aren't here to be able to talk, and I feel like I wanted to talk, and they're, they're...
Do you want another thirty, do you want another thirty seconds, see what you can wrap up? Please.
In addition, a qualified company, I said they had to have basic CPR, people that depend on these services, the crimes would be the same kind for the volunteer program. No one should be exempt. This is really about protecting seniors and the special needs child or adult, so that the parents or caregivers feel confident that the people that are hired have the training and background checks that are needed to be responsible to transport our loved ones and be capable of doing their job with caring hands. I'll cut it short, okay? There are two types of people in this world. The first kind are the people that will open the door for you when they see you coming with your daughter with a wheelchair, and then you have the kind of people that'll run into the store and be there so they don't have to hold the door open for you. I urge you, Mayor Schlum, and councilmembers, on maintaining a paid qualified transportation company and possibly using volunteers as aides. We, the residents of Fountain Hills, do appreciate our town for providing transportation for all of us in our community. I am hopeful that when considering budget cuts, that it would not include the elderly who live on six incomes and the handicapped who live on very low income. Uh, let me bring to your attention in regards to the draft budget for Fountain Hills 2009, 2010, to where it is headed. I am not going to read all the initiatives, but one that stands out are the following initiatives that were established. Number eight, enhance customer service and enrich our citizens' lives. Number nine, demonstrate organizational progress, progresses to citizens, and promote transparent government, support initiatives which enhance public safety. In closing, I just want to see that Mayor Schlum, I hope you're the kind of person that stands there to open the door when I come through with my daughter and councilmen. And it's time for the community of Fountain Hills to band together for the greater good of our town and the residents it serves, and I want to thank Enrique Melendez and his wife, Pam. Rick is a former councilman who served with honor and respect. He was always shown compassion and personal commitment to our residents of Fountain Hills. I want to personally thank him for being great neighbors and loyal friends. Thank you, Rick, for your compassion and all your help and support that you have given to me and my family in regards to this crucial, crucial issue, and being the kind of person that you are, holding the door open for me. In closing, on behalf of all residents in need of transportation services, please listen to your advocates, hear our voices, and act on the behalf of all residents that cannot be heard because of their disabilities. We, the residents of the town, are asking you to continue to serve the people who live here with a paid qualified transportation service. Thank you.
Thank you.
Jim Judge?
Thank you. Mayor, councilmembers, my name is Jim Judge. I, uh, serve on the voluntary committee, as Joan mentioned, and I'm also, I serve on the Senior Services Activity Commission, uh, member of that. And I, I would hope, uh, you know, ideal, ideally, we'd have the money to do many of the things that we all know would be nice to do, but the reality is, we don't have the money. Maricopa doesn't have the money, that's why they're cutting out STS. So, we're doing the best we can in, in Fountain Hills to provide, uh, alternative services to the folks that, that need it most. Letters were sent to all the affected, uh, folks that rode the bus one or more times last year. Uh, there were forty-seven, uh, letters. We responded to those who contacted Heather Ware, our voluntary coordinator, who does a great job, and, uh, those members then were interviewed by members of our, of our committee. Uh, and we determined then that, uh, there's roughly ten to twelve people who have the greatest, most severe needs that we cannot, uh, fulfill with volunteers. Those people have, uh, are, the folks that are affected need special transportation, equipment, uh, vans that are hand, uh, that are wheelchair, uh, accessible, and, uh, we just can't do that with, with volunteers. But, again, I'm not telling the council anything, and Mayor, anything you don't know, we've got a wonderful group of people in Fountain Hills who are volunteers. They'll step forward when there is a need, when they know of a need, and that's what our committee is, is attempting to do, is find out what the needs are, and then try to match with volunteers. We don't have the money. The town doesn't have the money to provide the services that I know all of you would like to provide. So, we do it, if we want to continue the services that we're providing in this town, we need volunteers, not only in this area, this is a critical area, but there's all kinds of other, uh, services in town that volunteers can assist town employees, not to take anyone's job away, but to assist, uh, town employees. And, uh, our committee, and there's a whole lot of other people, that will step forward as volunteers, organize, communicate, ask people to volunteer, and, and we'll get this job done. But, I am asking you, please, to, uh, consider, uh, funding these, the special needs where we just can't get volunteers, and we will have to hire outside, uh, services to transport the people. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Judge.
Patty Harmon?
Hello, Mayor and councilmembers. Um, my name is Patty Harmon, I've been a resident of Fountain Hills since 2000.
Move your microphone down, just hold it, there you go.
I've, um, ridden SPS since it began, and I believe it was 2001, and the, um, the drivers are very accommodating. Um, my concern about the volunteer, about the volunteer service is that for special, for the special needs children, you, um, and the adults, is if they're going to be able to, um, handle the special needs, you know, if something should arrive. Um, what I did is I contacted the town of Scottsdale because of the, of what they had put in about taking people over to Mayo Clinic for connecting bus routes. They're going to be doing away with the 114 in the near future, but they're going to be adding additional Route 106 buses. Uh, the person I spoke to over in Scottsdale, he's in charge of the transportation, his name is David Minehart, and, uh, they're having a meeting on June the 18th, and that's when they're going to be making the final decision, but he says it's definite, cause it costs them fifteen dollars to have that 114 that runs every hour. And on the five twelve bus, the one, the express bus, it runs twice a day, leaving town and coming back into town from where I live at to go to where the Goodwill is, is three and a half miles. There's no way that I would be able to walk that. Um, I don't understand, the buses come down Sora Boulevard, there's no bus stop. I don't understand why they cannot put bus stops on Sora, since they go in town, come in town on Sora, and they leave down Sora. And the other thing is, it would, I feel it would be very beneficial if they could get a regular bus route here in town, cause I've talked to various members, various residents, and there is an interest in a local bus service, uh, that would be able to run here in town and also possibly go into Scottsdale, up to, either, up into the Scottsdale healthcare area. The fees are going up on the Valley Metro system for the express bus, effective July 1st, and the reduced fare passes do not, um, are, do not apply to express bus routes.
Thank you very much.
You're very welcome.
Jay, how are you?
Good.
Jenny, and if Mike's father's name was Archie?
Yep.
Oh, I knew him for so many years.
Oh, yeah.
We had horses and the horse, whole horse deal up in the...
Yeah, in the Golden Eagle.
Yeah, right. Well, anyway, I have a son who's special needs, and, uh, he helps me at the salon somewhat. He, I gave him a title as the, uh, textile manager, and he does all the smocks and the towels, and he, uh, you know, bags them and brings them to the salon when I bring them over. Uh, cause when you have a child, especially a special needs child, and you're a caregiver, you want to afford them every possibility to be all they can be, and he's a wonderful man. Uh, Bible study at Scottsdale Bibles, made a great pressure upon him, and being vice-president of my corporation's really helped him. And the DDD, Department of Development of Disabilities in Scottsdale. And he's got a job there at Stars, formerly Scottsdale Foundation for the Handicaps, now Scottsdale Training and Rehabilitation Center. He's one of the five that has picked up on a, uh, well, he goes three days a week, Wednesday, Thursday, and Friday, down to the Evans location. And, uh, it's a wonderful thing for him, the camaraderie with the other, um, consumers, as they refer to them, where there's a lot of guidance and a job. Doesn't make much money, but he does something that really makes them feel good. And, uh, and now, you know, this transportation may not be available for him to do that, he can only see about six feet, he's totally mute, he's a wonderful, good-looking kid. And, uh, as somebody mentioned earlier, uh, he's done more for me than I've done for him, cause he's a special person. And, uh, I'm just here to see what's going to happen as far as transportation, so I can continue with this, cause it's very important to him, and, uh, that's all I have to say.
Thank you, William. Thanks for coming.
Christina Fredrickson?
My name is Christina Fredrickson. Uh, my concern right now is about myself, because I fall in the category of the elderly. I am eighty-nine years old, I'm going to be ninety in November. I have no one here for transportation. Both my sons live out of state of Arizona. What happens June the 30th? Am I going to be a prisoner in my own house? I need this transportation just as much as these other people do, and I'm hoping that the kindness of your hearts, you do something for us. I made it sweet and short, because you've heard enough, I guess. Now, also, I, you know, they said, "Well, why don't you take a cab?" Do you know how much it costs to take a cab from Fountain Hills to Shea Boulevard? I've experienced this already, fifty dollars, just for that one. I've experienced this already, fifty dollars just for that one trip. Now, they say, "Take a cab." What did they think, you're going to do it once? You'd have to do it over and over and over again if there's no transportation. So, here I am, stuck in the house. So, I wish you people would do something for us, we need it desperately. You know, we're still citizens of Fountain Hills, this is what we're here for, to help us. So, we'd appreciate it if you'd do something for us, okay?
Thanks, Ms. Fredrickson.
Mary Pocino and Barbara Patterson is going to read a statement for her.
This is Mary Pocino, and I'm going to read her statement, but she's here on the front row. And she's written it in the first person, and that's the way I'll read it. My name is Mary Pocino, and I've lived in Fountain Hills for six years. First, I thank you for letting me voice my grievance. One of the reasons I bought my home here was because of the special transportation services, which I've been using due to my declining health. I'm a taxpayer, and I feel there should be a transportation service for my doctor and dentist visits. I am ADA certified to use Dial-A-Ride, but they do not come to Fountain Hills. I can't afford taxicabs, but I would be glad to pay a reasonable fare for transportation. Please help our handicapped and senior citizens by providing the transportation we need to take the proper care of our health and general well-being. At the present time, we are in limbo regarding transportation for our most vulnerable neighbors, the handicapped and our senior citizens. I plan to remind everyone that these two conditions may, in time, affect anyone or someone we know. Therefore, it is not something to be lightly dismissed or swept under a carpet. In reality, it is a growing situation that needs to be addressed in the proper manner, which is to give equal rights to everyone. In this case, it is transportation rights. And I ask you to please treat those of us who are asking for your help to treat us with the dignity we deserve as your fellow human beings. I thank you again. That's Mary Pocino.
Thank you, Mary. Thank you, Barb.
Barbara Patterson-Whitehead?
This is in the first person?
Yeah, I got my own hat on, right. My name is Barbara Patterson-Whitehead, and I live at 15809 East Cactus Run in Fountain Hills, and I love this town. Mr. Mayor, Town Council, I have a few hats on tonight. I'm a member of the Senior Senator Advisory Commission, I'm president of the Senior Services of Fountain Hills, Inc. I'm the wife of a legally wonderful, blind man and a concerned citizen. My husband, George, has been very blessed to have used their services for the last year to get to work, but he's one of the lucky ones. I'll get him to work somehow. He's eighty-six and he can't drive, but he goes to Target four days a week with his lighted magnifying glass, and he is one of their best employees. He tells me they pick up people from all over our town, and we've seen that tonight. Some of these citizens are extremely handicapped and have no other means of transportation. The everyday errands that you and I take for granted, they can't do, they can't go to the bank, they can't go to the store. Since we have no social services in our town, we must be creative. We simply cannot eliminate this program. I know we have a group working very hard to organize volunteers to help with some of the load. I also know that this council is solidly in support of our seniors and all of our citizens, and we truly appreciate that. I would surely hope that you can see the need to provide funding to help in this endeavor. In this era of cutbacks, bailouts and job losses, let us not forget the vulnerable in our midst, and we've heard from several of them tonight. God willing, we will all grow old, this much is for sure, and some of us will hopefully be in good health and need not as much help. However, some are not so lucky. Shame on us if we do not help the less fortunate. Thank you.
Excuse me, we're not coming upstairs.
We'll start your time when you, oh, do we have a portable microphone, Beth? Ann, we'll get you a microphone, you can stay right there. You can sit down if you wish to, Ann, we can hear you with the microphone. Thanks, Mark. You're still going to have the timer, though, Ann.
Unfortunately, you know me, right? Here's what I have to say. This evening, I was quite impressed with all those that spoke in favor of the transportation. They did a beautiful job, and I can't say too much more, except, open up your hearts, it could be any one of us that needs a transportation. God bless you all for being so considerate of those that are handicapped, and may you be blessed, Mayor and the council, in making the right decisions for it. Thank you for allowing me to speak.
Thank you very much.
Rick Melendez?
Good to see you.
See you. Good evening, Mayor Schlum, council members and staff. Rick Melendez, I live on Hawk Drive and have been a resident of Fountain Hills for seventeen years, as well as a former council member. I'm here tonight to speak to you in support of a group of citizens, Fountain Hills residents, your constituents, who are in danger of losing a vital service, not through their fault, which is going to be very hard on them and very critical on their daily lives. Now, all of us know and are aware of the economic conditions our country faces, and I wonder often, as many others, the bailouts that the federal government's giving towards the auto industry, the banking, insurance, next will be my home state of California. And yet, state governments, county governments and local governments have to make hard decisions on what to do with their budgets. I learned of the issue at hand about a month ago because of foreign travel, and I contacted Supervisor Don Stapley. Now, some of you may ask why Supervisor Stapley, I'll tell you why. Mr. Stapley has been very supportive of Fountain Hills, the latest issue being the state land. While I was on the council, we had many hard issues, as you know, Councilman Arshenball, law enforcement deciding where we're going to go, police, the sheriff, the solution of the fire district, on and on. He personally gave me good advice during the years I served, having issues that we had for town managers we were dealing with, following the death of the best town manager this town will ever have, our dear friend, Paul Norton. I'd like to read a letter that I supplied to you as a courtesy that may have a little bit light in the tunnel. Here, Mr. Melendez, I want to thank you for taking the time to bring to my attention the crisis facing some of the residents of the Fountain Hills area with regard to transportation. As a former town councilman with Fountain Hills, your involvement in getting these issues attention, as well as your compassion and willingness to assist others is commendable. Please be aware that my office is working with our community services department in an effort to bring some relief for our residents with special needs. As noted by some of the letters we received, for some residents, this transportation is the only means available to transport to medical appointments, et cetera, outside of the town boundaries. You can contact my office, Susan Sherman, she can be reached at 602-ta-ta-ta. Susan will be following up with you to update you on the progress with regard to the transportation services. Meanwhile, we have my thanks for being the eyes of the years in the need of Fountain Hills. Finally, Mayor, I'm going to ask two things of you, council members and Mayor. I'm going to ask you to send a letter of support to Supervisor Stapley from the town, urging him to continue to do what he's doing, trying to secure other funding. And the last thing I want to ask you, I borrowed that from your human resources manager, challenge, I'm going to challenge you to think out of the box, like you used to say, Councilman Arshenball, give careful thought to what you're going to do with this issue. This is not planting and zoning, this is not deciding where you're going to put another monument, statue or sculpture, this is real people. Think carefully, help us, do the right thing.
All right, thank you, everyone that spoke and for not repeating things, but sharing your heart and your concerns, and most of you, all of you, I guess, were very well spoken. So, thank you for sharing it, or sharing on the behalf of a loved one as well. In listening to the comments, I think it's pretty clear that some communications that have gone out or some discussions seem to make it a little confusing, because we have a volunteer program and we have STS going away, and there really are, for the most part, Joan, right, two separate items. The STS program, as we mentioned, is obviously a county program that the county has currently decided to not, to no longer operate, and most of the folks we heard from here were using that service, and that's what they're concerned about. The volunteer program is a program that would more or less be an additional service or a service that would serve those with STS today, but that don't need to leave the town, but most of the folks we heard from tonight need to leave the community for services. So, we really haven't addressed that yet. How are we going to replace that service, or are we going to be able to consider replacing that service? But at this point, I want to open up for more dialogue or discussion, or Joan, if you have anything more to add in relation, in regards to perhaps providing some feedback to the comments that were stated. Councilmember Hanson?
Thank you, Mayor. Joan, could you just speak to the level of the drivers that we would have with Valley Metro? Would that be similar to what was provided in the STS program?
Yes, it would be, because it's all, it's the same program, I mean, Valley Metro's running both programs, it's just, there was such a need, they call us the big three, it was Fountain Hills, Chandler and Glendale, that were, that really had the needs, and so they decided to form this program, it's called Total Transit, and they'll have the same quality of drivers as they had with the STS program.
Great, thank you.
Thank you.
Oh, just one other thing. There was a letter to the editor about Vicap, and it was written by Leann Graz or Graz, I just wondered if possibly, it sounds like they've already had meetings, they're helping to come up with a volunteer organization to provide volunteers vetted, trained and insured, so they can provide the much-needed transportation, home visits, shopping and miscellaneous needs that our less fortunate community members are in need of.
Yeah.
And that just sounds like that could really help augment, maybe working with them.
We have, we have been in communication with Vicap, and they're, they're a great organization, they've been active in Fountain Hills for quite some time, and so we're trying to coordinate with them. Of course, they don't, again, that's by volunteers, so they don't have the vehicles to transport the disabled, or people that are in wheelchairs, but certainly other people, they can. Just as an added comment, we also have been in touch with Lutheran Social Services, and they plan to set up camp, I guess, here in Fountain Hills at one of the local churches. Now, they don't provide transportation, but one of the speakers mentioned about, you know, a lot of people in town that need help, maybe with like housekeeping and things like that, and they are going to provide those types of things. So, that will be coming, and we're working closely with them also.
Great, thank you.
Councilmember Dickey?
Mayor, thank you. A comment and a question. For weeks, I've been watching hearings at the legislature and listening to stories much like what we're hearing today, your testimony, and I just wanted to mention that about 4:00 AM this morning and then later today, the budgets that were passed in the state greatly affect our ability to provide these, for these kind of needs. And so, I, just to take this to another level, just please be aware of that and that your input's important on that level, too. My question has to do with shuttles or taxis or businesses that may be already in Fountain Hills, was there any interest in that, if we could, and you can see, we have quite a bit possibly budgeted for this item, was there any interest in, in doing something like that?
We were contacted by one local business that has a taxi and shuttle service here in town. We would have to go out to bid if we wanted to contract with a, with a private service. This particular service does have the vehicle to transport the disabled and, of course, go out of town. He hasn't indicated an exact price or a cost that he would agree to in his contract, but we wanted to get more direction from the council before we incurred legal costs, because obviously, if we go out for bid, you know, we incur legal costs for that, but that's something that we can do at the direction of the council. We have had some local interest in that.
Thank you, Mayor. And with some, what I think I'm hearing is there's some willingness to maybe put something towards it on a stipend, or on a copay basis, even if it's really minor, and maybe with a combination of different things like that, we could, we could maybe work with them.
Yeah.
Councilmember Leger?
Joan, in your, in your slide presentation, you made us aware of the Valley Metro Cabin Medical Transport Program. It's a new development for yourself, it's a new development for all of us, I just have a couple of questions about that particular program.
Okay.
To clarify what I think I heard you state earlier, based on your, your chatting with these folks, in terms of the program they're putting together, your evaluation is it's pretty much equivalent to the STS service?
Yeah.
In terms of the level of qualification of the drivers, it's not volunteer, it's professional, it's contract, contractual, et cetera. You had mentioned in your slide presentation that Valley Metro is currently trying to put this type of program together. Do we have a timeline in terms of when they could be operational?
Well, at the time I submitted this information to the council, they were just working on, on this program, but since then, they've really come a long way, and they've met with each of our, of the three cities that I mentioned, including Fountain Hills, and they're, they're pretty much ready to go. I mean, they, they could probably start this by July 1st.
Very good. And the price that they provided to us was sixty-seven thousand dollars?
Yes, I just got that information this afternoon from them. We had to provide all the exact mileage for each of the, of the people, and they came back with sixty-seven thousand.
And out of respect to you and your expertise in this area and dealing with human, human issues, human factors, human resources, as well as the committee you put together and a number of folks that I've worked with that are so well-intended in this community and currently do add a lot of value, I don't mean to put you on the spot, but let me ask you a question. Can you envision a program that's doable, a two-tier program, that would look at those that are less needy on the volunteer driver side and those that are more needy on a contract basis? And if so, what would that look like to you? And I don't want to talk dollars, but ideally, because we talked about this early in the week in terms of the options, and I know you have had a few days to noodle on it, so what would that program look like to you?
Well, definitely the people that are ambulatory and, and don't go outside the city limits, I, I'm very optimistic that we can match volunteers with those people to provide transportation for them, for local doctor appointments, dentist appointments, things like that. As far as an outside agency for the more severely handicapped, you know, we have a couple of different options, like, like we talked about tonight, and, but I think, my opinion, the most viable right now is this Total Transit with, with Valley Metro, because they have the trained drivers, they have the equipment to do that, and they, they maintain the vehicles, they carry the insurance on the vehicles. I mean, it's pretty much similar to what the STS program is. So, to me, that seems the most viable. The, the only obstacle, I guess, in the way is, is the cost that's involved with it, and the other obstacle that may happen in the future is, right now, we know who are current STS riders and what their needs are. There may be other members in the community that have needs too, that haven't come forward yet, or that were not current STS riders, and the last thing we want to do is start to provide a service that in a year we have to end because of funds or because it gets too big for us, and pull the rug out from these people a second time, like that just had happened through the county. So, we want to proceed very cautiously and make sure that whatever we go forward with, that it's going to be, you know, hopefully be a long-term option for these people.
Sure. Mayor, if I may. I, I won't ask, but I would imagine there are, there are some folks in here this evening that maybe take advantage of the Wheels on Mills program, and I've heard nothing but positive feedback about that program, and it is a... And it is a, it is a volunteer program and, and those folks are, are very reliable. And I'm confident that if we had residents stepping up in this town on the volunteer side.
Right.
To deal with those that are not as severely in need, I'm feeling more and more comfortable with that. I'm a little uncomfortable with the liability scenario, but I believe we can work through that. So, I, I would like to learn more about Valley Metro. And it appears from your discussion that they're pretty much ready to hit the ground running if.
It sounds like it, yeah.
If we're prepared to move in that direction.
Yeah.
Thank you, Joan. Thank you, Mayor.
You're welcome.
Vice Mayor.
Thank you, Mayor. Joan, I mean, actually, this is more, more for the public. You know, this is just the first glimpse of some of the budget woes that we're going to be seeing. At 4:00 this morning, the Senate passed a budget that will affect this town, $196,000 and took, if, if it's signed. And I'm assuming it's probably going to get vetoed. I want citizens of this town to know that we, as council members, have been sending out emails and communicating with our legislatures on a ongoing basis. I sent one out just this week and it seemed to have fallen on deaf, deaf ears. I don't understand why the legislature can't balance their budget on their own dime and stop robbing it from the rest of us because that's what they're really doing to you guys. They're robbing the money from you, they're robbing it from the county, they're causing the county to cancel the STS programs and who knows whether, ever the programs you're going to cancel. But this is a town of volunteers. And this is a town, from the time I moved into it in 1972, that stepped forward and took care of their own. And I have to commend staff, especially you, Joan, I know you've been doing a lot of work on this, and the volunteers, Jim Judd, Ms. Patterson, and Rick Davis over here. And the council said, what can we do? Let's step forward, let's do something. And we're doing that. Now, it's going to probably go off like a hit-and-miss engine. Are we going to stumble sometimes? Yep, probably are. Or are some people going to get lost in the shuffle? Maybe so, but not intentionally. I think what I'm sitting here asking myself and I'm asking the citizens of this town to do, step up and be volunteers like we've always had before, be the town that I remember, that I moved to, and be patient. I think we're going to move forward. I'm certainly in favor of moving forward with the program and doing what we can to help alleviate the problem. But I want the citizens to understand that it's not us doing it to you, it's the budget, it's the situation that we're into. And if you don't start talking to your legislatures, they're going to take a lot more away from us. And what worries me, and you heard Joan say it, is that we don't want to have a situation where we start a program and then our budget gets cut so much that we start eliminating public safety officers, firefighters, the elderly fall off, you know, the, the youth sports suffer, the, you know, and that's a real, real possibility, not just this year, but next year. And as your legislatures here in town, we can do everything we can to communicate with our legislatures at the state, but we need your help, too. You can find them. I have their phone numbers if you like it. But I just want to reassure everybody, it's, it's probably not going to go off without a hitch, but we're going to do everything we can to try to help it along. But you have to understand, we're under budget constraints, too. The way I look at everything, I try to take a simplistic look at things. And everybody has a slice of the pie. You know, senior services gets a slice of the pie, fire services, police, you know, the, the services that you require from town hall get a slice of the pie. The problem that we're dealing with is that pie's getting smaller. And I can't give somebody else a slice, say, well, your slice is gone and you're going to get that person's slice to make you whole again. So, we have to, and the staff struggles with this on a daily basis, and we struggle on a daily basis. And I appreciate, and I know the council up here appreciates, all your comments that you've given us tonight. We do take it to heart, we do listen, and we'll do what we can to help you out. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, Vice Mayor. Councilmember Dickey.
Mayor, thanks. I just have a question about the budget. We, this year, did budget already for this item in anticipation of STS. I'm a little, I just wanted to check on a couple of numbers. I think that in the budget, it said $90,000. And I, I don't know whether we're getting the 35, the 28, or the 26. I saw three different amounts as far as what we might be able to get. But I guess I would suggest, one of the things I noticed about this whole program even before was, you know, one of the things we do is we look at, okay, something is costing us, I think it was $165,000, and it was for about 40 people. So, realistically, we have to look at stuff like that. I'd like to see more people take advantage of this in any way that, whether it's the voluntary one. And if we do have $90,000 in already, even if we didn't need it right away, just looking at what we, what we do if something should come up and we should be able to use a little bit more, I, I think I'd rather see this $90,000 stay in the budget for now, even if it's 28 instead of 35, which I'm not really sure which one of those numbers was exactly right.
Ms. Davis, want to speak to the budget?
Yeah. I'm, I'm very appreciative of Councilmember Dickey bringing this issue up. As, as you know, there, there's no money in the budget that we have coming up. No money has been realized. The budget is, is primarily a policy statement by the council, which authorizes the expenditure up to $90,000 for STS. Because we, we put that in, the budget, before STS was officially gone. So, there isn't $90,000 right now. And as you heard from Councilmember Archambeau, there, there's likely some continuing evaporation of funds that we will endure throughout the year. I think the fun has just begun that way. It's, I echo his sentiments that it's unfortunate that the burden or that the budget dilemma that the state finds itself in is not necessarily being addressed, but it's being pushed down to a local level. So, we can address it. And maybe two times the charm, maybe we'll be able to do it what they weren't obviously able to do. The $28,000 is referred to as the LTAF II money that is set aside for transit purposes like this. It comes with a 25% match and therefore the extra $7,000 composes the total of $35,000. So, we have to contribute $7,000 to the $28,000 and that's why the, the multiple figures. So, in a recap, $90,000 is a policy statement that was made some time ago that the council will need to consider seriously whether they want to continue to make that policy statement in the budget. The 28 is the LTAF contribution, the 7,000 is our match for a total of $35,000. So, I hope that that, that clarifies those numbers. We know there's a lot flying around.
Mike, Vice Mayor.
Thank you, Mayor. Rick, that $35,000 we're talking about, is that money we're fairly sure we're going to get?
I, I look at Julie's face over there and, you know, I think if this were last year and you were asking that, I would say, oh, absolutely. But, but we never know what's going to happen from time to time. We're as confident as one can be in this particular economic climate, yes.
Okay.
As nebulous as I can get.
Thank you. I'd like to move this dialogue forward and get, and get some information out to folks here and out that are watching Channel 11 or other, through the internet, that today we do not have a solution beyond, starting July 1, for any of the folks using STS today, whether they're leaving town, they have special needs, or they just, they qualify because of other means today with STS. We don't have a program ready to go in July 1. So, folks do need to take precautions and measures because this is a, a quick change that's occurred that we're all having to deal with. As you know, or I think you can hear, that there's a lot of concern up here and we're going to do our best, staffs, and the committee's been doing a good job trying to come up with a volunteer program. But there's still a big gap here on the, a replacement of the, of the STS for those with disabilities or, you know, the 10 or so, 15, whatever it might be, that need services to leave Fountain Hills. There's no solution today for that. So, it's going to be an ongoing discussion, but what, we're three, four weeks out, less than four weeks out from, from that program terminating. So, that just needs to be clear that people are aware of that. I would assume on July 1, though, that STS transit van will not be coming by to pick, pick up who you're expecting to get picked up. Thank you. Councilmember Cantino?
Thank you, Mayor. I do want to say, thank Joan and all the people that have been working on this. I think the thing that really hit hard with this town is when Councilman Cantino got elected and he was in a scooter. I sit back now and look at everything, but this staff and the town employees have bent over backwards to provide me with every kind of assistance I can get as a councilperson in and out of these chambers and, and in the buildings. And they take special time to make sure I have the transportation. It's not an easy job to just have a service cut and then start with another one. As Mary Ann said, "Door shut in front of you." I have doors shut in my face every day. Nobody cares sometimes. But we now are faced with a situation where this town is caring and they are trying for all the handicapped people. So, when you see me out there in the scooter, don't run me down. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, Councilmember Cantino. The, um.
Mayor.
Yes. Councilmember Hanson.
Thank you, Mayor. I think we've been given an opportunity tonight and having Joan get that information today on Valley Metro. I mean, I think we're looking at two really good ways to go forward with the volunteer and, and getting the arrangements made with Valley Metro. And I, for one, would want to follow what Rick said about the policy statement and, as Ginny said, leaving the $90,000 in the budget as the policy, policy statement. And I think we could move forward with that.
Yeah. If we're not doing the, if we have any more discussion, I think maybe we look to give your staff some direction here. Vice Mayor.
Yeah. If you'd like, Mayor, I'd like to make a motion.
Sure.
I'd like to move to direct staff to proceed with the Give a Life program consisting of volunteer drivers as well as possible, as well as the possibility of contracting with an outside agency to provide transportation services to Fountain Hills residents who participate in daily adult, we don't like to call it adult daycare, but that's what we have down here, programs. And on that motion, if I could get a second?
I'd like.
Thank you. I'd like to just say, we have heard you calling out into the night. Thank you.
Yeah. So, the directions to staff is obviously the volunteer program, which we're not getting a lot of, we're not discussing a whole lot tonight. But I'm, I'm very excited for that program because that has a lot of opportunities to grow beyond what we're even looking to address with current needs, just to get the community a transit system where we don't have one to some extent. And but the town does not have a transportation department. We don't have a bus system. We don't have any of that today, so you just can't turn it up and get people certified and all those sort of things. But I do favor the motion to look at outside agencies to particularly, you know, the one that looks most promising is the Valley Metro Total Transit program to meet the needs of those with the special needs that we need to get outside of Fountain Hills to their, to their services and, and education and rehabilitation. Any other comments before we call for a vote on this motion to move forward in support of the Give a Lift and the, and the replacement, in essence, for the STS? Is that a good motion, Andrew? We're good?
That'll be all we need. We'll probably have to be back with the contract in front of you on the 18th if we can get it done. If not, that's one more thing we'll have to add to the 2nd of July.
Thank you.
If they have a program, we'll come back with a contract.
Thank you. Appreciate it. All right. Great work, everybody. Appreciate everybody's comments. Call for the motion, all in support, in the Cape Cod Senate. Aye. Aye.
Mayor, 6-0.
All right. Thank you again, everybody, for coming down. All right, now, we'll go backwards to item number six in the agenda. We'll take a five-minute nature break and then we'll be right back.
Good to see you. How beautiful you are.
Thank you.
Wait, you can't say that in the mic.
Is this a, is this a, is this a, is this a?
Get there and find him, they'll be able to tell you all about that.
Talk to, talk to Joan about that.
Hello.
Yes, I do. Yeah.
Of course. Well, we're doing that.
How you doing?
Yeah, you look like you're a pretty good driver.
I'm so glad.
Hello.
Thank you.
Thank you.
You know, I, I would just say, you know, I wasn't in the car.
They are, um, they're cooking.
And they're on the road.
They're like, you can never talk to them.
Hey, look, great.
How's it going?
How's it going?
How you doing?
How you doing?
Now, you know, you don't know me at all, do you?
No.
Okay. I'm usually, you know where the tanning salon is?
Yes.
I sit there and I watch you going by on your scooter. I didn't know who you were.
Yeah.
Now, I do know who you are.
Yeah.
No, you wouldn't know because I never come out. I just sit there and you go, you go dipping by and I'm going, dipping by.
I go, but, but they don't.
I know you, I believe it.
Yeah.
Yes, and you know, there aren't some people that they have, they, I mean, the STS is so important.
Yeah, it is.
You gotta brush your nose.
Oh, really?
Well, we, we go.
We used to run food banks, they dominate food banks, we run every, you know.
I'm laughing.
We've always been helping people, been out there now, my wife's helping, my brother's
helping.
I've been, I've been in Biny for 35 years, but I mean, that's the only thing I do, I
mean, I'm new.
Laurel Boulevard, nothing else.
Good to be here.
Nice to meet you.
Okay, okay.
My money's in the bank.
I like you.
I'm pretty good.
We're working on, we're doing a pretty good, let's say, a, 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 a,
a, a, a, a, a, a, a, a, a, a, a, a, a, a, a, a, a, a, a, a, a, a, a, a, a, a, a, a,
a, a, a, a, a, a, a, a, a, a, a, a, a, a, a, a, a, a, a, a, a, a, a, a, a, a, a, a,
a, a, a, a, a, a, a, a, a, a, a, a, a, a, a, a, a, a, a, a, a, a, a, a, a, a, a, a, a, a, a, a, a, a, a, a, a, a, a, a, a, a, a, a, a, a, a, a, a, a, a, a, a, a, a, a, a, a, a, a, a, a, a, a, a, a, a, a, a, a, a, a, a, a, a, a, a, a, a, a, a, a, a, a,
based on what they're hearing or the feedback that the council's hearing. Is that correct?
Yes, it is, and this has already been through them.
That's been through them. I think they're also doing another study, if I recall, that may be just getting underway. So that would be something that we would have to adjust midstream if it was going to be affecting this fiscal year's budget, but that would, could derive a lower revenue number if, in fact, fees were lower midstream of the fiscal year calendar. Or could that be done? Mary or Julie?
One of the things that we're attempting to do with the fee structure is to put all the fees in one place, so that if changes need to be made to the fees along the way, it would be much easier to do than it is now with some fees in town code, other fees in resolutions or ordinances.
That's the other item on that, and maybe somebody else questions on the community center, but before they do, on the, uh, the other fees that, um, that I know some of us would like to see addressed are for events that maybe fundraisers are doing that might be in our town code today. Have any of those been addressed in this current fiscal year's budget, or how would those be addressed if we wished to consider lowering, say, there's a small organization that wanted to do a fundraiser that required a permit of some kind that would end up costing them a fee? Has that been addressed recently or been reduced?
The fees in this fee schedule are the existing fees, but the Special Events Committee met today, and one of the items on the agenda was the start of a review of fees.
Okay. And then how would that come forward?
As an amendment to the fee schedule.
Okay, amendment to the, this fee schedule in our, that we're looking at in our current budget?
That's correct.
Okay. Are these, they're all, all the fees are in here, but some are in our town code as far as how they're exercised, and some are just policies that staff follows? Is that how it works?
Some of them are just administrative fees, some are incorporated in town code, and some are in resolutions. I think Andrew could probably address where we're at with doing the background to get them all in one place.
Okay.
Mr. Mayor, members of the council, the, um, the current effort is to do one code amendment to the town code to address all of the items that have fees built into the town code so that you don't have to go back through and do a code amendment every time you have to update fees. That the new language we've been inserting as we've been going along over the past couple of years and that we're going to do in one fell swoop for all the rest of them, is that the council may by separate resolution adopt fees or as part of a fee schedules with the annual budget. That way you can address them once a year at the time when you're doing the budget, when it makes sense to know how many, what fees you'll be generating or not, or if something comes up midstream during the middle of the year, you can adjust it by resolution as well. Just trying to make it a little easier for you all to administer those fees rather than having to do code amendments all the time.
Thank you. Councilmember Hanson?
If I could ask, Mary, when your special event committee is looking at the fees, would that also be for things like median on the avenue and other open space areas, maybe in the parks where events may take place?
The agenda we spoke about today was primarily just special event application fees. It didn't include median rentals or other types of rentals.
Might that be something you could look at in, if we're trying to enhance and make events easier, and maybe, you know, looking at the fees that people have to pay to have these events, the location of the events?
We could take that under advisement.
So not all events require, um, a special event, whatever it may be called?
Special event permit.
Permit? So not all events require a special event permit?
We have Ramada rentals, for example, where if you wanted to have a small birthday party, family event, you would just rent a Ramada, but we don't consider that an event.
Okay. I guess what I, to get to the heart of where I'm at, and it's up for discussion in council, but I would, I know that, first of all, compare our community center to other community centers or convention centers, and it's a great value. We have a community center that really is like a convention center with the amenities that are available and the beauty of it and the size of the rooms, and, of course, we have classrooms as well, but with the ballrooms are much like a convention center, and it's very nice. So it does cost money to keep it up and staffing and that sort of thing, so I understand that. What I, where I'm coming from is the community organizations that do so much for our community and the citizens, raising money, giving of their time, I'd like to empower them to do even more if we can. In light of that, that's where I would like, I would like to see those fees and special events looked at in that light. If we can empower them to do more, which will ultimately do more for our community, that's what I'd like to help them. There was, there was an example of the Murphy Mobile that was done down on Avenue of the Fountains, and she had to take out a permit, which is understandable because you're using a public street, you need to have a process and keep track of things, but I think the fee was a little high. So I think, in order to encourage more things, that was a fundraiser, it was an awareness campaign for, you know, someone that we've lost, and a great opportunity for the community and the Arts Committee to get together. I'd like to encourage more of that, particularly in the time when even organizations that do a lot of fundraising are getting less and less funds, if we can make it easier. But I'm also cognizant that every dollar less coming in, revenue for people using the, using our facilities is a dollar less to fund an STS-type program as well. So I know it's not a black and white issue, so, but I just wanted to share where I was coming from as far as considering special event fees, Ramada rentals, and the community center fees. Councilmember Dickey?
Oh, Mayor, thank you. I'm sorry if I missed something, but, so the actual special events, since each one is looked at individually, there would have to be some sort of a value judgment done on each event?
No, I think the, one way I understand it right now, we have 501(c)(3) local breakdowns in pricing. I don't know if that goes towards special events, maybe that is something to add in there. I think most of what I'm talking, speaking to would be more in that 501(c)(3) local organization, to empower them to do more things. I'm not sure if that would cover most of what Councilmember Hanson's speaking to, but that would be more what I'd like to see.
Mayor, thanks. I just, I just caution about making case-by-case decisions sometimes.
Oh, yeah.
So if there's a way to codify it in a, in a way where we're all on the same page.
I agree. We have a great deal, as our town manager knows when he started up here, great deal of folks come forward wanting to use something for free, and it's a great opportunity, it's a great effort that these folks are doing, a great fundraiser, but in order to manage things and have a process, you have to have a fee schedule. And just giving everything for free, well, I really like that one, or I really like this one, it just isn't manageable. So I agree. Thank you. Councilmember Contino?
Yes, thank you, Mayor. The one thing I'd like to have, especially on special events, I'm going to come off to the edge of this one, is when we have to fill out all these papers, can't we try and simplify this for the people of Fountain Hills, for our events, instead of having to go through 15 pieces of paperwork to get something done? I would like to see that, because we are trying to get more events, but we also have to fill out so much paperwork, it's just exhausting for us.
I believe that's part of the objective here, is that correct?
The second item on the agenda today was streamlining the process and the application.
I'm just trying to hurry the meeting through.
Yep, good. No, that's great. That is very important as well. All right. Yes, absolutely.
Okay, Mayor, thank you. Getting back to the, the transportation then, I just wanted to clarify something. If we get, say, between $25,000 and $30,000 LTAF 2, does, is that in the $90,000? I hate to sound so dense, but is that, when we have $90,000 budgeted for something, that usually includes what we expect as far as a grant or something? So basically, the $90,000 includes the anticipation of getting about $25,000 or $30,000. Is that not the way it is?
Um, Mayor Schlum, Councilwoman Dickey, the actual $90,000 was an appropriation we included in the budget that we understood the cost was going to be for, with Maricopa County for the STS program. The $28,000 is now an allocation of a grant that we're eligible to apply for, for LTAF 2, which is lottery money, which we did not anticipate. We were under the understanding there was going to be no opportunity, but it requires a 25% match. So what we would be required to do is out of that allocation or appropriation we have in the general fund, we would take the 25% that has to come from the general fund and put it over with the $28,000, giving it $30,000, but then that would reduce the $90,000 appropriation down by $7,000. So there's two separate funding sources. One is in the general fund that we appropriated, you know, for Maricopa County, and then the other one is actually not budgeted, but we can make room for it because it's a grant that we would apply for and hopefully get for the $28,000.
So, Mayor, Julie, we could technically only be spending $60,000. If we have $90,000 that we're saying we're ready to spend on this transportation project, we may be only, as far as a general fund sort of a thing, be spending around $60,000, because we can supplement it with the, because my figure says it's closer to $30,000, so let's just say we're getting $30,000 of LTAF 2. So just going straight from that, we have our own $7,000 or whatever our match is, but basically the amount coming out of general fund is not going to be $90,000. It doesn't have to be.
Um, Mayor Schlum, Councilwoman Dickey, it doesn't have to be. Again, the $90,000 is an appropriation put in there. We don't have the money. It's, you know, with the hope that we have the revenue that comes in to pay for it, but the, like I said, the $28,000 is, is money that we didn't plan on getting and hopefully will get, we're, you know, we're likely to get it, we've been successful in the past to get it. But then, like you said, the $7,000 has to come out of the general fund, out of that $90,000 appropriation, but we don't actually have the money sitting there for the $90,000.
Okay, so Mayor, so but that's like almost anything that we're doing then, right?
That's correct.
We're just expecting to do that.
That's correct.
Speaking of money that we might not have, just to go back a little bit about what Mike was talking about with the budget possibly, straight off, straight off the top, about $200,000 off of our shared revenue that comes from LTF, but I also wanted to mention the ramifications of the budget that passed are a lot greater than that, because along with this becomes a moratorium on development fees over the next several years. They put a policy statement in the budget that said we would not, that there would be a moratorium on development fees. So while they're saying that we can backfill this money that we give to the school districts that they would take from vehicle license tax by using development fees in any way we want, there's a moratorium on development fees in the same budget. And there's also a moratorium on any building code changes. So if, say, we went for a grant that they wanted, I don't know, green, green codes or something, or a certain kind of roof, it's preventing us from enacting any new building codes also. So even if it's stimulus funds or anything else, so the actual, the actual effect could be a lot greater than this $200,000. Now, I know that a lot of the talk today was, oh, well, we'll go ahead and work on this budget, this fake budget or whatever, I mean, just a lot of comments that indicated that it will probably not become law, but we need to be aware, obviously, and Katie has been very good, the league has been very good, but again, and this is just in the way of, in light of this conversation that we had tonight on, on the transportation, these are just the kind of things that, that, that will affect us, that will affect us absolutely. So you just have to keep in touch. We've got another few weeks until the end of the year. State government will, will shut down if we don't have, we're not like the federal government where we can have these continuing resolutions. So we do have, indeed have a deadline, as far as I know, I don't know if Andrew, if you know anything different, but I've been told that we don't have that same resolution ability. So just keep, keep, you know, keep your ears open.
Well, that's the thing with state shared revenues, the legislative changes...
Mayor, thanks. I just, I just caution about making case-by-case decisions sometimes.
Oh, yeah.
So if there's a way to codify it in a, in a way where we're all on the same page.
I agree. We have a great deal, as our town manager knows when he started up here. Great deal of folks come forward wanting to use something for free, and it's a great opportunity. It's a great effort that these folks are doing, a great fundraiser. But in order to manage things and have a process, you have to have a fee schedule. And, and just giving everything for free, while I really like that one, or I really like this one, it just isn't manageable. So I agree. Thank you. Councilmember Contino?
Yes, thank you, Mayor. The one thing I'd like to have, especially on special events, I'm going to come off to the edge of this one, is when we have to fill out all these papers, can't we try and simplify this for the people of Fountain Hills for our events? Instead of having to go through 15 pieces of paperwork to get something done? I would like to see that, because we are trying to get more events, but we also have to fill out so much paperwork. It's just exhausting for us.
I believe that's part of the, the objective here. Is that correct?
The second item on the agenda today was streamlining the process and the application.
I'm just trying to hurry the meeting through.
Yep, good. Now, that's great. That is very important as well. All right.
For the public?
Yes, absolutely.
Okay, Mayor, thank you. Getting back to the, the transportation then, I just wanted to clarify something. If we get, say, between $25,000 and $30,000 LTAF II, does, is that in the 90,000? I hate to sound so dense, but is that, when we have 90,000 budgeted for something, that usually includes what we expect as far as a grant or something? So basically, the 90,000 includes the anticipation of getting about $25,000 or $30,000. Is that not the way it is?
Mayor Schlum, Councilwoman Dickey, the actual $90,000 was an appropriation we included in the budget that we understood the cost was going to be for, with Maricopa County for the STS program. The $28,000 is now an allocation of a grant that we're eligible to apply for, for LTAF II, which is lottery money, which we did not anticipate. We were under the understanding there was going to be no opportunity, but it requires a 25% match. So what we would be required to do is out of that allocation or appropriation we have in the general fund, we would take the 25% that has to come from the general fund and put it over with the 28,000, giving it 30,000, but then that would reduce the $90,000 appropriation down by $7,000. So there's two separate funding sources. One is in the general fund that we appropriated, you know, for Maricopa County, and then the other one is actually not budgeted, but we can make room for it because it's a grant that we would apply for and hopefully get for the 28,000.
So Mayor, Julie, we could technically only be spending 60,000. If we have 90,000 that we're saying we're ready to spend on this transportation project, we may be only, as far as a general fund sort of a thing, be spending around 60, because we can supplement it with the, because my figure says it's closer to 30,000. So let's just say we're getting 30,000 of LTAF II. So just going straight from that, we have our own 7,000 or whatever our match is, but basically, the amount coming out of general fund is not going to be 90,000. It doesn't have to be.
Mayor Schlum, Councilwoman Dickey, it doesn't have to be. Again, the 90,000 is an appropriation put in there. We don't have the money. It's, you know, with the hope that we have the revenue that comes in to pay for it, but the, like I said, the 28,000 is, is money that we didn't plan on getting and hopefully will get, we're, you know, we're likely to get it. We've been successful in the past to get it. But then, like you said, the 7,000 has to come out of the general fund, out of that $90,000 appropriation. But we don't actually have the money sitting there for the 90,000.
Okay, so Mayor, so but that's like almost anything that we're doing then, right?
That's correct.
We're just expecting to do that.
General fund.
Speaking of money that we might not have, just to go back a little bit about what Mike was talking about with the, the budget possibly, straighting off, straight off the top, about $200,000 off of our shared revenue that comes from LTF. But I also wanted to mention the ramifications of the budget that passed are a lot greater than that, because along with this becomes a moratorium on development fees over the next several years. They put a policy statement in the budget that said we would not, that there would be a moratorium on development fees. So while they're saying that we can backfill this money that we give to the school districts that they would take from vehicle license tax by using development fees in any way we want, there's a moratorium on development fees in the same budget. And there's also a moratorium on any building code changes. So if, say, we went for a grant that they wanted, I don't know, green, green codes or something, or a certain kind of roof, it's preventing us from enacting any new building codes also. So even if it's stimulus funds or anything else. So the actual, the actual effect could be a lot greater than this 200,000. Now, I know that a lot of the talk today was, oh, well, we'll go ahead and work on this budget, this fake budget or whatever. I mean, just a lot of comments that indicated that it will probably not become law. But we need to be aware, obviously, and Katie has been very good, the league has been very good. But again, and this is just in the way of, in light of this conversation that we had tonight on, on the transportation, these are just the kind of things that, that, that will affect us, that will affect us absolutely. So we just have to keep in touch. We got another few weeks until the end of the, the year. State government will, will shut down if we don't have, we're not like the federal government where we can have these continuing resolutions. So we, we do have, indeed have a deadline, as far as I know. I don't know if Andrew, if you know anything different, but I've been told that we don't have that same resolution ability. So just keep, keep, you know, keep your ears open.
Well, that's the thing with state shared revenues. The legislative changes or just policy changes that take money from cities and towns, the ones that serve the local communities, 80% of the revenues come in through cities and towns that ended up at the state for them to divvy up, they're trying to return less and less of that. The 15% state shared revenue, current model that's put together means we get 15%, period, of certain monies that come into the state, which there are fewer and fewer dollars coming into the state. We're already receiving less dollars based on, we're not asking for more dollars. They're looking to find other places to pull dollars from that obviously affect our budget or affect services that we can deliver at a local level, which is probably the most efficient level to spend dollars at. I think most people, even legislators, would agree. So I know they have a challenge there, but we all knew need to stay engaged because we're affected by that. I think that's the, that's what I'm hearing. So we're also hopeful they'll do the right thing as well. It won't affect the services we deliver to our citizens here. I was going to say for a voice, here. Councilmember, Councilmember Legay.
Julie, just to further clarify the questions that were asked by Councilman, Councilperson Dickey, and connected to something that Councilperson Hanson mentioned as well. On page 142 of the budget under senior services, it says a bullet point, IGA Special Transportation Services, $90,000. Now, the way that is kind of being presented to us right now, that could be utilized for this Valley Metro, because we're just saying special transportation. Is that correct? Okay. So if we move forward with that, if, if, with all things being equal approving that, then if we were to add additional dollars to that for lottery, and let me see if I have the math correct, you said 90, but out of 97 would need to be used for the match. So then that would reduce the availability to 83, but then we would gain, I believe you said, 28. So if we were targeting all of those dollars for this transportation program that we're working on, that would be a sum of $111,000 that would be available for transportation. Is that, and it may not be in this line item, but just in, in a bucket called transportation?
Right. Mayor Schlum, Councilwoman Legay, we would have 90,000 plus 28,000.
Okay, very good. Okay. And I think Joan had mentioned earlier that if we're looking at the contract that's on the table now, that's $67,000, and she was also looking at the possibility of STI pending, which would probably bring up that number a little higher. So thank you very much.
So on that item, the, the replacement of STS and the volunteer program that might provide STIP, and would we just need to change it as far as what it's called in the budget in order to make it available for the programs we will likely need to fund?
Mayor Schlum, correct. It's, it's in there as an appropriation. We called it STS because that's what we understood it to be, but it could be transportation.
Okay, very good. Anything else, council on the budget?
Mayor, yes, I have a couple other questions. Julie, in the past week or so, you provided us with this addendum to the budget, this worksheet that was requested by council members. And let me see if I can find, oh, yes. Under administration, it talks under legal fees, contingency for outside legal counsel, 48,000. That's, could you address that?
Mayor Schlum, Councilwoman Legay, we always include a contingency in the event that we are served with a lawsuit that it requires specialized services. For example, if we had an employee-type lawsuit, we would have to pay for outside counsel, you know, for those specialized types of services. So we always include a contingency amount for outside.
And we have done that historically.
And like sales tax, a sales tax lawsuit requires special services of an outside attorney.
And we have done that historically.
Correct.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Any other comments on the budget? Good. So appreciate you reaching out to council members and offering one-on-ones and additional time with folks. And now, Councilmember Legay has another item we forgot to ask about.
Thank you. I found it. I found my second one here. Thank you for your, your courtesy here. Under planning and zoning, 109, on the back of the first page, under professional, yeah, professional fees, it talks, it says eliminated subsidy for mediation. Are we getting rid of that subsidy for that program completely, or has that just moved to a different place in the budget?
Mayor Schlum, Councilwoman Legay, currently what we have right now is, is this subsidy to this SOLVIT mediation program.
Yes.
Where residents have to pay half and the town pays. I've eliminated it out of the budget. That was one of the, the budget cuts that we had to make. Residents still have the ability to call SOLVIT. They still have the ability to use the mediation program. It's just that they will have to pay the full amount. The town wouldn't subsidize it any longer.
Okay, so the program is still available.
Correct.
But we're just not subsidizing it?
Correct.
Thank you.
All right, anything else? Thank you very much for being available, and probably many of the staff for hanging out in light of questions that might come up. Appreciated. So we do not have a budget. We don't have a motion or need a motion on this, do we, Andrew, on any items we discussed?
No, Mr. Mayor, the tentative budget will be adopted as the final budget on the 18th, at the same time you hold your hearing. Required for the tax levy, the tax levy resolution will be back to you on July 2nd.
All right, thank you very much. All right, now I get to hit the gavel. Open up public hearing. Special use permit for Quinn United Enterprises on behalf of Cricket Communications allow a replacement of a 49-foot tall light pole with an 80-foot tall light pole with a cellular antenna on top in Desert Vista Park. Mr. Rogers, thank you.
Thank you, Mayor. This is an application for a special use permit to allow Cricket Communications to replace a 49-foot, 2-inch ballfield light pole with an 80-foot, 6-inch monopole cellular antenna with ballfield lights installed at the same height as they currently exist. The pole requires a special use permit because the C1 zoning district in which it's being placed only allows a maximum height of 25 feet, and because the property is within 300 feet of a residential area. This slide shows the location of the proposed pole replacement in the south corner of Desert Vista Park, adjacent to Chaparral City Water Company's property, approximately 100 feet from Desert Vista Drive, and about the same distance away from the alley. This would be Desert Vista, and this is the alley, the location. This is the water department, vacant lot there. Placing the antenna in this location allows for an out-of-the-way placement of the ground equipment and also replaces an existing light pole, albeit with a somewhat taller pole. This is the site plan and also a blow-up of the lease area where the pole and ground equipment will be located. The equipment will be surrounded by an eight-foot wall, which will be finished with stucco and paint to match the other structures in the park. Planning and zoning commission forwarded a recommendation to approve. The staff recommends the town council vote to approve the special use permit as presented, subject to the terms that will be contained in the lease agreement. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Anyone from the public on this?
No, Mayor.
Do I get to close the public hearing now? All right. What did I do? Councilmember Hanson?
Thank you.
I like doing that. Hardly ever get to do the, I should let you guys do that every once in a while.
I'm going to take that away from you.
That's fun. All right, now we close the public hearing and move to consideration of a special use permit for Quinn United Enterprises as just presented. May I request a motion? So move? How about a second?
Second.
All right, thank you. Motion, second. Now, some additional discussion here. Mr. Rogers on this item. I wanted to ask about that fence, the, the equipment that's going to be placed there. I went out there and saw the location, and all the other poles, are the poles more centrally located in the park or taller, like probably close to 80 feet?
Some of them are taller, yes. These around the, the outside are, are shorter poles. They seem to be similar height to this one, 49 feet. The larger ones have lights on the top and lights in the middle. This has lights on the top, which would be equal to the lights in the middle on the other poles. But they are closer to where people live for visibility sake, and it's a lot, it's a much taller pole, another, you know, 30 feet on top of this pole roughly. But obviously, you're not putting lights at the top of the pole. The lights would stay at about the same height. Is that correct? Correct. The lights would be mounted in the same location, pointed in the same direction.
And then the cellular fins or whatever, for lack of a better term, would be at the top, and the pole would obviously be taller. All right, the, I don't think that's as much of an issue. For me, I thought it would be. But, but the location of the equipment moves into where the park, takes away some of the park space that we would have. It's a grassy area there, and I don't like that in particular. But I also wonder how tall the fence will be, because it's going to provide areas for, it's going to be less visible from people on the road looking at the park. It's going to block visibility, I would suspect, for police that are patrolling. You know, it's a place to, for somebody to hide out at or, you know, sit around. It's going to provide less visibility in a park area that's pretty much wide open. Do you know how, what the dimensions of that fence are, that enclosed area with the equipment?
Yeah, the enclosed area is 16 feet by 12 feet.
And it's an eight-foot tall fence.
Eight-foot tall.
Or block wall.
All right. Is there any way, do we know if there's a, a way for that to be reduced in size at all without affecting there?
What you have is you have an enclosure here. This is the 16 by 12 enclosure. This is the wall that holds the, the equipment. And you've also got, done a fence around the actual pole for security reasons, so nobody climbs it and plays with things. That's about as small as it's going to get.
And I realize they probably picked that pole because the transformers are right there.
Actually, they chose a different pole, but it was going to interfere with park operations, and so the park department chose this location.
And is this pole going to be available for other providers to utilize?
It is my understanding that this is a single-user pole.
All right. And same with the equipment area, I would suspect, just before Cricket?
Correct.
All right. I think it'd be great to try to have poles be joint-use poles only, so that we can get more use from these, these poles. And potentially, always include an option for the community, the town, to utilize the, the poles as well.
That could always be part of a contract negotiation. The thing with additional carriers on these poles would be that the enclosures that you see, each one's going to have their own enclosure then. So those would tend to get bigger, even though they use the same pole for their arrays.
Then they could jointly fund an underground vault. I'm sure that'll be a little more expensive.
Another negotiation.
But just things to keep in mind. Appreciate the presentation. Councilmember Dickey?
Did I miss how much the rent would actually be?
I think that's still under negotiation, but it's somewhere around 18,000 or, or 18, 000 a year.
Mr. Mayor, Councilmember, I believe that is 1,500 a month in the current version of the lease.
Thank you. I mean, that, that defense of the, the enclosure area does bother me, because it's in the middle of the park. I know it's right adjacent to that square area that may be used, may not be used by, I think it's sanitary.
The water department.
That little postage stamp area there. But it is, this does block the visibility in the park and obviously the use of that area. It doesn't seem to interfere directly with the soccer field, but it is right adjacent to it. So you've got to be sensitive to that. Any other comments on this? We got a motion in a second. Councilmember Hanson?
I just had a question on F, where it says, "STIP believes that by replacing an existing light pole with a taller pole in the same location, the likelihood of an increased visual impact is lessened." And I just kind of wondered how that would work if it's bigger that...
Well, that was as opposed to creating another pole in a new location.
Okay. I mean, it's bigger, and it's like, I've seen it before.
Appreciate. Now, I love that picture from way far away, how the, how it shows how the pole is not that much, doesn't have much of an impact, but, yes, Councilmember Legay?
I, I kind of had the same interpretation as Councilperson Hanson did when I read that same statement, that it's 50 additional feet. But I think what I was able to figure out is that you're replacing a shorter pole with a taller pole, but the taller pole is not any taller than the tallest poles that are at the park, with the exception of the six additional feet for the transformer. Is that...
Yeah, there are some taller poles. I think the other taller poles are around 76, 75 feet.
Okay, so this is in line with some of the tallest poles. Okay, very good. Thank you.
And it is about 30 extra feet.
Yeah, I, I didn't have my calculator with me.
31 feet, 4 inches.
Yep, thank you. Anything else before we call vote? All in favor? In a capable saying aye? Aye, opposed?
Mayor Sticero?
All right, thank you very much. All right, next item. Discussion with possible direction of staff relating to the design process to meet the grand funding criteria, grant funding criteria for the potential new fire station. Yeah, grand funding. Now, it is a lot of money, but call it grand, grant funding. Chief Agreka, welcome.
Thank you. Good evening, Mayor, councilmembers. Well, Monday's the date that I've been waiting for, and presumably you've been waiting for. June 8th is the opening of the application period for the fire station construction grant, FSC. There's going to be approximately, as we mentioned, $210 million to be awarded, $15 million maximum per grant, $5 million maximum per project. So one community could go up to three fire stations and get, receive $15 million. It's going to be competitive. They are expecting approximately $10 to $13 billion worth of requests on the initial application. Through pre-screening, they're going to reduce that down to $420 million worth of requests that will go into peer review. As they stated, and as we stated before, there is going to be no cost share required. However, there is a cost share option, and they happened to mention it four times throughout the 48-page document, that if you so choose to do a match, it'll be looked upon favorably and given more consideration to your project as you have more desire to see it go through. However, again, it's not required, and I'm not sitting here tonight asking you to do that. I'm just bringing it to your attention. Should you desire to do that, it could be any denomination you wanted. In firefighter grants, it's a 90, 10% match that we've always done before. So it's something to think about. It's certainly not a hard-dollar commitment at this point here. It would only be a hard-dollar commitment if the grant was deemed to be successful and awarded to the town.
Wait, can I stop you there?
Sure can.
Excuse me, Mayor. Two questions would be, but it, but if it affects our ability to get the grant, then to show willingness to do that, then we would have to decide first?
Again, if we decided to, when we fill out the grant application, if I put in there that the town was willing to do a 10% match, that would be looked upon favorably in the per, in the peer preview. Now, is that a guarantee? Absolutely not. Again, it's points that they're going to give you, and then the peer review committee is going to look at your application on its own. It's not going to compare us with Phoenix or any other place. It's just one more piece that they look upon favorably, that we have more of a commitment as a community, seeing that we're willing to share more dollars rather than ask for the whole dollar amount upfront.
And Mayor, Scott, then can we use the design money that we already put in as the grant match, as a match?
No. No. They have come up and said any money spent prior to the application for the grant is already nonconservable funds.
Okay.
So that money is, is there.
And we need to clarify, when we see nonconservable funds, it means it doesn't count towards any kind of match. But as far as, as meeting the criteria and, and helping us with the application, some of the things that we've done have...
Right. It'll, it'll certainly bode well as far as peer committee review, that we are serious, that we've been... we've been working on this since at least 2006. We've been moving forward. We have the commitment, we have the property, we have plans, almost completed, and so we're much farther down the road than, say, a community that's starting from ground zero on their project. So, I feel very comfortable where we're at with our ability to compete. Some of the priorities that they're going to look upon, first responder safety, and what they're really saying there is, are you looking to take a less safe building, a dilapidated building, and either improve it or move out of it into a safer structure for the firefighters who are living and trying to conduct business out of that station? We would be able to kind of sort of answer somewhat to that question, not that we're moving out of a dilapidated building, but the new building would have a biohazard room, would have female facilities and that type of thing. The other big thing that they're looking for is enhanced response capability, and that's been the mantra of what we've been saying from day one, and that is their number one, number two consideration for fire station construction. So, we're in good shape there. Another thing they're looking at in a little bit lesser vein is expanded mutual aid, and we could certainly talk about how that'll enhance our relationship with the city of Scottsdale and Fort McDowell Indian community. And the last thing that they're looking for is effect on daily operations, and again, that's what we've been talking about, taking some of the load off of Station One by putting this station in a more advantageous position.
Chief Agreka, there's a question here from councilmember Leger.
Going back, thank you, Mayor. Going back to the 10%, I'm just trying to get a sense of schedule. When would we have to commit that 10%?
Between June 8th and July 10th, before we push the submit button application package.
In other words, we would have to have it budgeted, but would we actually be submitting?
We would be submitting to the, to FEMA that the town is willing, ready, and able, if awarded a grant, to pay for 10% of that grant.
So, Hanson, I, to ask my question differently, then it would be due when the grant is awarded?
Correct.
Okay. And when would you anticipate the grant being awarded?
The grants will be awarded between September and December of this year.
Of, of, of this fiscal year?
Yes, sir.
Okay, thank you, that answers my question.
Chief, thanks for being on top of this grant.
Well, it's been kind of important.
Yeah, very important, and just to clarify this, the additional monies for lead portion?
Can I, can I get there?
Yeah, I'm sorry.
I'll get there real, real quick.
Yes.
Some of the other things that they're going to be looking about, looking for us to explain in our narrative is frequency of use, population served, economic vitality of the community, joblessness, and, and we would be looking at county figures of joblessness, not Fountain Hills numbers, because I don't even think there are Fountain Hills numbers, but there certainly are county numbers of how many people are unemployed. But they are looking at that because of the stimulus part of the package. We would also have to explain in the narrative, why is the town asking for this financial help? What is the reason why we are going in this direction? And we could certainly do that. Shovel readiness, what does that really mean? Project description, we own the land, design phase, appropriately zoned, utilities on or adjacent properties, studies completed, environmental, floodplain, and that, and that type of a thing. And some of that stuff would come in past the per, the peer preview, and it would come into the technical review phase if we make it into the third phase. They're very interested to know the length of time this project has been planned. They want to know, are our firefighters trained and meet NFPA standards, which they do? They want to know if we provide emergency medical services, and we do. Some of the construction features that they're looking for is must comply with NFPA 1500s, which are fire station standards, and we would comply with those. Must incorporate sustainable practices and should achieve LEEDs registration, being certified silver, gold, or platinum. Again, LEED certification does not guarantee that you will get this award. Again, it's a point system that would be added up to the final determination if you would be selected for this grant. And again, I'm not asking you to allocate the dollars upfront to go the LEED direction. That would be something, if you so determined that you wanted to do, that would be something that you would direct the town manager, and then the town manager would direct me to go in that direction.
But for the application, you would need that information in advance in order to benefit the application?
Yes.
But the funding...
And those, and those are hard dollars.
Meaning there are dollars?
There are dollars.
They're not part of the 90-10?
No.
Okay, so it'd be additional, I see. Councilmember Dickey?
Mayor, thanks. I've been trying to get as much information as I can over the last eight hours or something, but, and I, and I don't feel, I feel like I, there's more information to be had on this that I wasn't able to get by tonight because this is kind of a fairly new point to all of us, really. My, my question had to do with a couple, well, and I've been talking to Rick about this, like I said, but we, we talked a little bit about LEED certification last year in a bill that we were going to do, an energy bill, and there was some talk about, well, why does it have to just be LEED? And even though we, the bill didn't end up being able to be heard, there was a, there was some talk about energy-efficient buildings, what does that mean, residential and commercial buildings that meet or exceed energy efficiencies prescribed by the United States Environmental, you know, EPA Energy Star Program or a Leadership in Energy Program, which is LEED, and then, but basically, they kind of came up with something that said, that it's something that's recognized, International Energy Conservation Code. So, I wanted to know, before we kind of looked at whether we had to do this right now, is there any wiggle room? Is it just LEED? I mean, it looks like it from there, but, but are they, are there any other recognized certifications or registrations that maybe wouldn't cost that much? I'm also not clear on why it would have to be done at this time. Is it, is it that we can't say that we're planning to have a LEED-certified fire station? Why does it have to be done at, at this part, at this point, when they know we do have a LEED-certified architect? So, I had, I still had a couple of questions that I, that makes me feel like I don't want to come up with anything necessarily right now if it's possible to not have to do that right now.
Very good. Appreciate that. But tonight, you're looking for us to potentially modify or increase the amount that we would budget for that item, given, to improve our chances on us being awarded this, or I guess the 90-10 would not necessarily, how would that affect us, Rick? What are you looking for?
We may, obviously, we've had to, Mayor, council, react very quickly to this, and time is of the essence as we move forward. We have a couple of moving parts. One is an application deadline coming up. Another is an architect that is working on the plans. From what we understand, what the architect's explained to us is if we want to actually get the certificate that has the little indicia or whatever that says we're silver-qualified in, in LEEDs, that, that process has to begin immediately in the design process, and it follows through the construction of the project. And at the end, they give you a, a certificate. We learned today that that, that cost is going to be in the neighborhood of about $74,000. From the beginning, as I had given you some material earlier, I think last night, that I, I gave it to you, that we have always intended and we are, are very much still committed to the idea of making sure that elements, LEEDs elements are incorporated into this building to a silver level. What is lacking, almost like when you want to, when you buy a pet that's a purebred, but you want the pedigree to go with it, you have to pay the extra thing, we're asked, we're, we're saying that in order to get this LEED certification, it's like asking for a pedigree on, on your, your project. Our recommendation to you is that we explain in the application process the criteria, the elements pertaining to LEEDs that we intend to incorporate into this building, that our architect is LEED-certified, we're committed to creating a green building, et cetera, but our first choice would not be at this time, such scarcity of funds and also, well, for a variety of other reasons, that we don't think will be as, necessarily have a net impact that would, because Scott has told you, this is a point system. We just don't think that's going to have the impact of putting this over the top or making that big of a difference if we have the, the piece of paper that says LEED-certified on it. This will be a LEEDs building, and I think we can make a strong case for that in the application process. So, no, we're not asking for $74,000 here tonight, and we wouldn't ask you to make a decision tonight. We'd bring this back, obviously, but we felt like we needed to get this information in front of you as soon as possible. Option two, obviously, is to go for the certification. But there is yet another option, and that is we could delay the design so that we don't pass that threshold. I call it the point of no return, and we delay the design, we, we kind of put the brakes on the design until we find out whether we have the grant and incorporate the cost of the certification into our grant request. That would not be our first recommendation to you because that could be until September or October before we find out. So, it, it, as Scott said this morning, it's kind of a crapshoot because the competition is so fierce. I applaud you for doing what you have done so far. We have got the design going, we think we've got a strong project, we own the land, et cetera, et cetera. There are so many strengths that we bring to the table, including the fact that we are incorporating LEED standards into this building, and we have a LEED-certified architect, that we're thinking the extra, the extra $74,000, you're not going to get an extra $74,000 worth of chance to get the grant. I think the best way to describe to you is what our feelings were this morning, and we, we talked at length about this. So, we're happy to take whatever direction you have for us, but we wanted to make sure you were clear what our recommendation is to you. And when we left that table this morning, we were unified in that, that recommendation.
Can you go over that recommendation?
Recommendation is that we thoroughly explain in the application process that we are in the midst of a design that incorporates a silver-level LEED certification, but that we also explain that formal certification is cost prohibitive to us at this time. Obviously, we're asking for a grant.
Did you speak to the 10%?
Yes, I, I can, to that also, I think, my experience with grants is that any time that we're able to contribute some, that we show that we're willing to invest in the project ourselves, that does have a powerful bearing on, on the project's consideration. I think the 10% is appropriate. It's in line with other fire-related grants in the past. It also is not so large that the question comes up, well, why aren't you just funding the whole project if you're willing to, to match that much?
Thank you.
So, I'd recommend the 10%.
Thanks, Mayor.
Thank you, Mayor. So, Rick, by the time the grant's probably awarded, and if we're lucky enough to get, get that grant, it's going to be, what, January of next year before we start moving forward with anything? I know we have the expenditure in this year's budget. Well, we probably won't actually go through the whole expenditure until we get into the following year's budget, if we were lucky enough to get that moving along. Is that, is that a correct scenario?
Well, that, that's certainly a decision that needs to be made and one that we haven't absolutely made at this time. We'll, we would have a discussion with you about that.
Well, we would have to go, we would, are we confident that it's going to come within our budget, that we're not going to get some, and I know we've had this discussion before, Rick, because I think right now, with the economy the way it is, we'll get some fairly good bids on it. But we're fairly comfortable, we're not going to blow that budget, it's not going to go up higher than what we have budgeted.
I don't think it is at this time.
Chief Agreka?
Mayor, councilmember, to answer that question, we, we would sit down in the next week or two, we, meaning myself, Chief Roberts, and Julie Getty, and go over that budget one more time, and also add in there some caveats that they told us that we could do, administrative costs, auditing costs, because this government, this grant would have to be audited because it's over $500,000. So, we would have to figure out what the cost of a single audit would be and what our administrative costs would be to carry forward this grant if it's accepted, because we can, we can put in for up to 3% of the grant for administrative costs. So, that's a number that I don't really have, but Julie and I, or Julie, would be able to give a very educated estimate on what that number would be. So, before we just arbitrarily put in a grant that, oh, we think 1.5 million, should probably do it based on $200 a square foot, no, we need to break it down a little bit more than that and make sure we put in there everything that we think that we can get out of that. And so, we would really do a calculated spreadsheet on doing that. Going back to the LEEDs, you know, there's a sustainability sheet that you have to fill out a spreadsheet, and they talk about, you know, what are your goals and what are your expectations? And that's where, what Rick had mentioned, is where we would put our goals and our expectations. All along, we never really expected nor desired this to be a LEED-certified building, simply because of the cost of doing LEEDs. $75,000 to give you a piece of paper. We've always committed that this would be the greenest building that we could possibly build, including the criteria that would take effect on a LEEDs building and that. But, you know, you have to remember that, you know, you become a LEED-certified building, that's just not the cost upfront and the cost going through it. There's a backend cost to that, to when that station is built and open, you have to go through certification continuation processes throughout the course of time to maintain that LEED certification. And I don't really know what the heck that really gets you, other than being able to say, "Look at us, we're LEED silver." And I don't know what that piece of paper really does, when we know for a fact that we designed and engineered into the site selection, runoff, light, energy, energy efficiency, heating and cooling, everything that LEEDs would want, we, we will do. It's just that we don't have a piece of paper that costs us $74,000.
So, yeah.
And maybe I'm speaking out of turn here.
Thanks, Mayor.
Thank you, Scott. I think where I was going with that is, is, one, I think the issue's been raised that we want to make sure that if we're going to do a 10% match, that, yeah, if we get the grant, we have to come up with the money, and the question is, will we have the money? I'm sure we can find it somewhere. We always manage to pull a rabbit out of our hat when we have to. But I just want to express for myself that I'm in favor of moving forward with the grant match, because I think that would, it always seems to get us that step ahead. I think we're already miles ahead of a lot of them, and I think we're probably going to come out on, on a, if we don't win the grant, we, we probably just fell off the ladder, right at the very end. So, I want to position the town as a councilmember, I want to position our town in the best possible way to get the grant, but I don't want to just throw money at it. So, I, I think that you're, you're positioned to, you know, not go get that certification like you would with a pedigree, you know? To me, that's, you know, the intent is if we do what we say we're going to do, if we build it, I think you can build a strong case tonight, and I'm in support of that. That's where I stand. Thank you.
Councilmember Dickey?
Mayor, thanks. Well, one thing I wanted to mention was, we did the tour of the Green Fire Station in Scottsdale. I was under the impression that we were going for LEED certification, and that was why I asked the architect at the time, if he was LEED certified. I wasn't ask, I was asking because that was what I thought was our, our goal. I also, if you would allow us to not make too much of a decision tonight, give me a chance to research why it costs $74,000 or $60,000 or whatever it is, because, is value to it. I know it's the point system, I know physically why it costs because they check everything that you're doing, and there's, and it's a point system, and did you really use this kind of wood, and is your carpeting recycling, and are you, do you have the right kind of lighting, and AC? So, I understand that, but the... But the fact that it has a cost associated with it would make me assume it has a value associated with it, too, that goes beyond what we're talking about. And I'm not prepared to discuss that at length right now because I don't really know it, and I've been trying to figure that out. The other thing is, I would question or ask to tell me why it's a powerful effect on our ability to get a grant with a 10% match, but that this you don't think is very important. When I, when it is here, in about the same way, under key points, no cost share required, but indicating to us right now that a 10%, it would be a very important part. But then here, this looks pretty important to me, too. It doesn't say must, but it says should achieve LEED registration. So, I would like to know the rationale and why you don't think this is that important to us to get the funding, but this is. I'm, I'm, I am for doing whatever we can to get the funding. And I absolutely do think that this would help us get the funding, so.
Tom, Mayor.
Yeah, and Councilmember and Mayor, I can explain that rationale, too. I think it's just based on experience. It's not based, because I haven't had, I don't think many of us have had experience with the LEED certification before, but we have with the, with the matching part of it. So, we make that assumption. It's not, we could be very much wrong about that, but it was just based on our experience. That tends to have a powerful impact on consideration. But the question mark in our minds is how powerful is this getting the certificate going to be? And so, we fall a little short of making the conclusion that that's not as important as the 10% grant match, but we don't know that.
That may, the 10%, the LEED fee is a hard cost, you stated, right?
That's correct. We know exactly what it would cost.
That's not a fee that you could, you would, we'd end up getting 90% back on. It's not an overall fee that would be included in a grant?
Well, what we would have to do right now, Mayor, is stop our design. Well, if you said tonight, or on the 18th, that we're going to appropriate $74,000 towards LEED certification, then the design of the building would go forward under a new set of parameters in design work. And they have it all broke down into the costs where that $74,000 would go to. If we decided that we wanted to try to get that $74,000 from the grant, we would have to stop the design process right now and wait to determine if, in fact, we are going to be awarded that grant. And if we are awarded that grant, then we would start the design process up right now, again, or at that time, excuse me. And I don't know what type of ramifications that would have with the contract, with the architectural firm that we have now, is can we start and stop? Or what some of those technicalities would be? But again, it's, you know, I think Councilwoman Dickey is wise in trying to look into this a little bit deeper because it's really more than just the first $74,000 to get this piece of paper. There's a lot more to it than that. There's dollars after the fact, too, that you should be aware of, that this is more than just a one-time cost. And is that $74,000? And, you know, I know that when the building official and myself and Chief Roberts first saw that, you know, and we asked them, you know, what LEEDs was and what LEEDs cost, we about fell out of our chair, quite frankly. And because basically, you're paying somebody to do the, all the work twice. And, you know, being a LEED certified architectural firm is kind of a misnomer. Yes, they are. But you, they have to go out and hire another firm, another set of engineers, to go through the LEEDs processing. And you pay like a commission, which is the majority of that money, to get that certification. So, basically, you're paying for all your engineering and design work almost twice. And, you know, it'd be nice to know, you know, what the payoff is of that $75,000. And right now, and I might be extremely naive, I don't see it at the moment. And so, I have some angst with it. But, you know, we're doing our homework at breakneck speed to see, you know, what is the payoff other than maybe a few extra points in the process of this grant application.
All right, Councilmember Leger.
On the LEED certification, you know, I'm just going on the memo we received from the, our town manager. It talks about a third-party organization who holds the rights and responsibility of franchise to issue LEED certification. So, that's kind of like an auditor, if you may, kind of going through that process. If we had a building inspector on staff that was LEED certified, could they inspecting the building along the way certify?
Not for LEEDs.
Excuse me?
Not for LEEDs.
Not even if they're not, I mean, they could be LEED certified.
One of the required, several of the requirements to be LEED certified, as far as being able to handle this process, first of all, you have to have a four-year engineering degree. And you have to go through several different processes to become LEED certified. And then you have to go through several more processes where you can charge the $38,500 to certify your building as LEED certified.
I guess, my question was simply if we had a staff person or if we hired someone in house that was LEED certified, could they inspect this project and certify it?
No, you'd have to hire one of these consulting firms that are LEED professional.
All right. Do we have, thank you. Do we, do we need to talk about this any further tonight?
No, we'll bring it back to you on, on June the 18th with a recommendation. And I think you have our recommendation, and we'll just open it up for further discussion, direction, and staff.
My only addition is if it, let's give it 11% matching. Now, we're that much further along.
Mr. Mayor, there is no magic number for a match. The only reason why I came up with the 10% is that that's what we're required to come up with in the firefighter grant of the community of 50,000 or less. Community of 50,000 or more, it's 20%. But that percentage, if you so choose to come up with a percentage, can be any number you want.
Thank you. Was there something else?
Just one last question. Assuming that the price tag's $1.5 million, we're looking at $150,000. This is directed at the town manager. Currently, in our budget, in our draft budget, in our budget discussions, that $150,000 is not there. So, are you suggesting that you would bring a recommendation back to us on June 18th that would be inclusive of that $150,000?
No, I think tonight, we've made clear what our recommendation is to you, that we proceed with the application process explaining the elements that we intend to incorporate in our aspiration to achieve LEED Silver certification equivalent standards in the building. That we've given you some other options as well, going forward with the LEED certification, at which time you have architectural appropriation for this building of $360,000 in the budget. We're only spending $114,000. There's obviously some latitude there. If the council decides, you know, let's go forward with that, we can do that. Option number three is we delay the architectural process to a point that we see whether, to the point of, whether we see if we get the grant or not. And if we get the grant, then we incorporate the cost of the LEED certification and the cost of the building the way we have other professional expenditures that we're tacking on to the, to the building. So, on the 18th, we'd want you to give us some direction as to which one of those three options, knowing what our first, our first recommendation is to you, or give us a fourth or fifth or sixth option that we haven't thought of right now. But we, we thought these are the strongest three options that we present to you.
Currently, we don't have, currently, that $360,000 is in this fiscal year's budget. It's not in this fiscal year's budget. In our current budget, now, we don't have $150,000 for this project. So, my question is, would you be presenting to us an option for moving that money over? And my question, next question would be, where's it coming from? Capital?
I think if I could...
I think it would be good to hammer this out tonight, rather than try to hammer this out on the 18th. And I'm not talking LEEDs. It seems like we need a little more time on that.
Well, if you just, let's say, let's hypothetically say that you went with our recommendation, our first option, obviously, no modification would need to be made to the budget. If you wanted to go forward with the LEED certification...
The match.
The match, the 10%.
I'm talking only about the match.
Okay. The match, obviously, would have to be budgeted as a part of the project in the year that we were going to go forward with that expenditure.
So, would it not, would it not make sense tonight for this body to decide whether we want to go with that 10% match or not? And if we do decide to go with that match...
I understand what you're saying.
Then you can do your due diligence and then present back to us a budget on the 18th that has that $150,000 in it, which is an oxymoron because, it's a circular argument, because we don't even have a bid on the project. So, I'm not even sure what that 10% is. So, I think it's a discussion we need to, for, I think we need to firm something up here rather than having this in a June 18th budget.
Mr. Mayor, can I make a comment?
Then you're going to be asking us to approve the budget on June 19th or 20th because you're going to have to go back to the drawing board again.
Chief LaGraca.
Mayor, Councilman Leger, you bring up a very good point about what that dollar cost really is to build the station. If we stop the architect right now, we are not going to get that hard dollar cost from him until we start him up again. And then, we're just working on what we think it's going to cost. So, that is a consideration.
You need to move forward on those bids. I mean, to even get in the ballpark with this thing.
That's Julie.
She's coming up.
Yeah. My understanding is that, that if we make a decision that we want to do, I'm just trying to buy a little time for folks to make a decision as well and think about some of these things. And really, we just got these criteria, and we're just able to turn the pages just very, very recently. So, we got it in front of you as absolutely as fast as we could. We want to give a little bit of time. So, if we go to the 18th and you decide on the 10% match, as you pass the budget, can an amendment be made at that time to include the 10% match as they pass the budget? Or does that have to really be decided tonight?
Mayor Shalom, members of the council, Mr. Davis, if the decision was made to put in a match, we would have to include it in the budget, but we'd have to take it from somewhere else because we've already adopted our maximum, which means we can't increase our budget by the 10%, whatever it is. We have to take it from somewhere else.
Exactly. That's why I'm asking, that's why I'm having this discussion right now. Excuse me.
So, the, in this next year's current budget that we're going to be considering, or we have a discussion earlier on and will be considering next meeting, what is budgeted for the fire station as far as it going, cash going out and cash coming in? Is it zero out? Or do we have an expenditure there that's not accounted for as far as grant funding?
Mayor Shalom, actually, what we budget, and we typically do this when we have a project, we budget the full amount of the project, even if we know that it's going to be a two-year project because you don't really know how much you're going to get done. So, you actually have to budget the full amounts. For example, for the fire station, I think it was $1.546. The reality is, we probably won't spend that full amount because we probably won't get started till after the grand award. And it would probably not be finished within that period of time. So, conceivably, you would spend three-quarters of it next fiscal year, and then the last quarter of it in the following fiscal year, which is where you would budget it.
All right. So, if we were to fund 100% of the cost at what we expected to cost today, we would have the money already in the budget?
That's correct.
All right. It'll just be coming, I mean, it's just more of a transparency issue and checks and balances of, if it's 10%, but we weren't expecting to pay 10%, that's the discussion. But it is already in the budget that it could be, the 10%, actually, the 100% could be spent. Correct? All right.
Thank you, Mayor. The question still is, again, can we, do we have time this coming week or two weeks to discuss what, where we would get the 150 and come back with that information or give that to the council between now and the 18th and still be able to incorporate that change into the budget by the 18th?
If I might, the, I think we've already, I think now I realize we have the money in the budget. That extra $150,000 would be a discussion point tonight if we choose to say, let's go with the 10%. That'd be us in, choosing to spend an extra 10% of what we weren't planning on. But the budget's already there. I think, I don't think we had, now, I don't think, now that we've talked about this, we don't have to find that $150,000. I think it is there, correct?
Mayor, that's correct.
You understand that now, right?
Oh, I, I understand it very well.
Okay.
You know, what concerns me, though, is if it's, if, then you're moving your cost across to a new budget year, and you're then throwing on additional dollars. For example, and if it's a $1.5 million project, then you're, it's 1.5 plus $150,000. So, I don't think that's being transparent because what you're saying is that we're doing this project on this year, and then all of a sudden, we're coming to next budget year, and then we're asking for more money because we needed more money to complete the project because we didn't have it budgeted to begin with. So, I mean, I understand what she's basically saying is that there's more than adequate amount of money to start the project, and it will probably finish in a different budget year. But going back to our earlier discussion, when we talked about this project, we were approving architectural based on a projection of 1.5, and this $150,000 wasn't on the table. So, it's an added cost to the project. So, that's why I look at as where, where would that come from? If it's currently, I don't think we could squeeze it out of our current budget unless we drop some other capital project.
Mayor Shalom, Councilman Leger, but we would only be getting 90% of the grant because our match would be 10%. So, the total would still be 1.546. It's just that the grant would pay 90% and we would pay 10%. Or alternatively, we would pay, the grant would pay 100%. So, it's still 1.546.
Sure, I understand that, assuming that we come in at 1.5 and it's not a higher, higher number. Thank you. I'm done.
All right. Thank you. Vice Mayor.
And thank you, Mayor. And I'm just going, that's where I was going earlier with my question is...
Can't go back, I'm sorry.
No, we're not going back, we're going forward. Is, we have 1.5 we could spend this year, but if the project came in at 200, or 1.7, we had to come up with another $200,000, we wouldn't have to do that to the following year, which we could then appropriate because we wouldn't have the appropriations to expend that kind of money for this year. And I've learned that through the years that I've been on the council that sometimes you almost want jobs to fall into the following year because that gives you the availability to find out what funds you've saved that you can put to the capital improvement projects that you can then now use to finish the job up. An example of that is the fountain that we have out here. We had it budgeted. We had to play it around into the following year because we didn't have the funds come in. in, but we still had the money budgeted, and we just carried the budget over. So we could still... If I understand it right, we could still accept a contract for, say, $1.7 million. We just can't spend more than 1.5 this year. And the matching funds that we would have would be in that 1.5. Okay. Is that correct, or am I thinking wrong on that?
Ms. Gittes, if I could clarify. If we had a project that we budgeted 1.5 in capital improvement, and it went to 1.7, wouldn't we just have to... Couldn't we spend that, but we'd have to reduce it somewhere else?
Mayor Shalom, that'd be correct. You could accept that contract, but you would have to take the 200...
From another project.
200,000 from somewhere else.
So it's not like a...
From another project. Now we're going to float it over.
It's not like a general fund line item issue where you're really stuck to a figure. Councilmember Hanson.
Well, we have $433,000 in capital contingency. Could that, if pushed, come to shove, couldn't...
It could come from anywhere in the capital improvement plan, as far as I understand. The question is, is council going to be comfortable putting in 10% to get 90%? That's the question. It can be done under the current budget. So I don't know if we need that tonight.
Mayor, just on that note, for both... For all of this criteria, if you don't mind, that we would speak a little bit with our free consultant and with maybe our congressman, or maybe some other people who, since this is so new, there may be some feelings that are going to start to come out more where this is really, really important and maybe this isn't. So it's kind of a... I know we're in a rush, but if we can do that, that might help a little too.
All right. Thank you. Got all the answers you need?
Chief LeGrand. We're very clear. I'm crystal clear, and I was ready to go without these two considerations and that. But, you know, once we got the document and we saw that there was two opportunities, Mr. Davis really wanted to bring that to your attention and give you the ability and the opportunity to weigh in on that and give us our direction, rather than us just arbitrarily moving forward without taking your advice into consideration when maybe you did want to do a 5%, 10%, 15% match, and you wanted to go Leeds or whatever else, and we just assumed that you didn't. So we wanted to make sure that, you know, we were crystal clear and upfront and honest with you and allow you to continue to give us advice in which direction you want us to go.
Thank you.
But we're clear and ready to go. And really, we have a month... Doesn't sound like much time, but it's plenty of time to do the application.
Thank you, Chief.
Yeah. And I was trying every which way I could to make sure... Make good on the commitment I made to you. I wasn't looking for you to necessarily make a decision tonight, but I want to get the information in front of you as fast as possible. And for the record, the $74,000 shocked all of us. We would have told you way upfront if we'd known that. But the good news is, nothing's really changed. You can still do that, just the same as you... It's like turning back the clock, the same as you could have back when the architect was here. I knew... The only thing I knew is we were getting a Leeds silver level building, and I'm still becoming familiar with Leeds. I think all of us are. We're beginning to learn this project, and our second building or third building of Leeds will know a lot more about this process. Some of the things that the chief disclosed here tonight is still very new to me, and the education process is ongoing. So we want you to make sure that... We want you to make the right decision, but not necessarily be rushed into it. So that's why I was badgering Julie up here so much, is can we push this off till next council meeting before we... You have to absolutely make a decision. And I'd like to take the opportunity to apologize for getting personal and giving you my personal opinion on this Leeds thing here, but this whole Leeds thing has really kind of flipped my switch. And I try not to get personal on any of this stuff here, but this one really kind of reached down and got me. And so I apologize for giving you my opinion, which I should not have done.
You're our fire chief. You are our fire chief.
Is that your opinion, Scott?
We appreciate your opinion. Your opinion counts here.
Thank you.
Welcome. Thank you. Anything else? Thank you very much, Chief. Thanks for being all over that. All right. Next item, there's staff here, so we're going to probably get through this one tonight. Joan's still here. Discussion and consideration of approving the four-day, 10-hour-per-day workweek schedule for town employees on a permanent basis. How many hours did you put in today, Joan? Just kidding.
Too many. And I... The last time you'll have to hear from me tonight, so I'll promise to shorten this up a little bit as it's getting late. But as you all know, the town staff has been on a trial period beginning January 5 for the 410 business hours. And we promised that we would get back to the council after the trial period and report on what we had learned and how it had gone, and that's what we're doing tonight. There was actual four criteria that we evaluated during this trial period, and the first one was we were going to focus on how we could enhance customer service and how the customers would benefit from the extended town hall hours. I thought this was very interesting. The number of customers that came into town hall before 8:00 a.m., so between 7:00 and 8:00, and after 5:00 has steadily increased over the trial period. It began at 5.75% in January, and in May, it has increased to a whopping 15% of our customers have actually come into the second floor to... Before those hours. So that indicates that our customers are really becoming increasingly more aware of the benefit of our extended hours. And we also have been surveying our customers during this trial period. We've had surveys available at the front desk, and the customer service reps have been requesting that they fill these surveys out. In tallying those results, 85% of our customers were in favor of continuing the 410 schedule or they were neutral, meaning they didn't care if we were 48s or 410s. And 15% were in favor of going back to the 58 schedule. And this screen just shows some of the comments that were made by the customers that filled out our survey, so you could read through those. I know you've had an opportunity to look at those, but I wanted to give you a chance to know what some of the people were saying. And just to point out, there were 183 responses from our customers. So obviously, not all of them filled them out, but maybe they opted not to, but they were requested to.
I'm sorry, how many filled them out?
183 of customers.
Filled them out?
Yes.
Thank you.
Yes. The second criteria that we were evaluating was any cost savings, and we never predicted that there would be a huge cost savings in utilities. But unfortunately, we had a power outage that was beyond our control in January that knocked out our control panels, and facilities lost control over the air handlers for about two months before the new part came. So we don't really have a fair analysis of any utility savings that we may have had. However, we did realize at least $1,000 in the four months in just electric for those four months. And I guess it goes without saying that we're going to have some cost savings because all the workstations are shut down on Fridays, and the lights are turned off and things like that on the second floor. So it goes without saying that we'll have some of that. And also, there's the cost savings for the employees where they drive one less day to work. And I know some of the comments that we've heard in the past was, well, you know, they're saving from not driving to work on Friday, but they're still driving because they have... They're running their errands and things like that. And that is true. But the number of employees that we have that work, that live outside of Fountain Hills, they do not have to drive the same distance to run their errands as it takes them to commute to work. The third criteria was how we could impact the environment favorably, and our Green Fridays is in direct alignment with the trip reduction program that's required by Maricopa County. They also... The Green Fridays also uphold our town environmental initiatives, which was in direct alignment with the council's goals, and also the strategic priority of the strategic plan to enhance dedication to our natural environment. Continuing with the environmental impact, we have approximately 63 full-time employees that we have right now, and this saves 6,500 commuting trips annually by being closed on Friday, or 70,200 commuting miles annually. So that's quite a bit. By reducing that, it also reduces the carbon dioxide released into the atmosphere annually by 70,000 pounds. And the last criteria was employee retention and job satisfaction. We haven't had any employees leave because they didn't like the 410s and wanted to go work someplace else. We've retained the employees we've had. We've heard a lot of comments about there's a lot of less stress driving because they're missing the rush hours if they had to work 8:00 to 5:00. And as I said before, there's 36.5% of our town staff who travel to work from outside of Fountain Hills. Some of the concerns that were expressed about daycare, we have provided alternatives for those, and I think we've met... Satisfied everybody that had those concerns with daycare issues. And last, during these tight budgetary times, I think the 410s is one thing that the employees really appreciate as a benefit for working for the town. The employee satisfaction survey, about 100% of our employees returned the survey. 79% of them were in favor of continuing the 410 schedule or were neutral, where they didn't care either way. 8% wanted to continue the 410s, but only during the summer months, and 13% were in favor of going back to the 58 schedule. And again, I made some of the... Listed some of the comments here that the employees listed on their surveys. These were just a summary. We heard a lot from them that they felt more refreshed on Monday after having the long weekend. They felt much more productive because they would look at the clock and think, oh, I've still got two more hours, but I can complete this project. And so overall, they felt more productive and more relaxed. And again, I listed some of the comments that they made... The employees made that were not in favor of the 410s, and makes for a long day for some people. Some of the people that work outside, maybe 10 hours in the summer months, will be too hot for them. We can... The parks stayed on a 58 schedule. They did not go to the 410s. So they will not be affected by the heat any more than they normally are. I know the street department is working with possibly some of their staff going to 58s during the summer months so that they won't be affected so much by the heat. And also, some of the concerns we heard that was that they didn't... The community did not understand that the staff was still going to be working 40 hours a week. This was not shorting the work week by closing one day. We were still working 40 hours Monday through Thursday. And exempt employees are still available to work on Fridays and weekends in case they're required to do so. If there's a council retreat, special events, any special projects, and I think you've seen that over the last four to five months, that staff has always been available on Fridays if they've been required to be there. This is, again, the table that I showed to you back in January about holiday pay is affected, and I won't go over that line by line, but just to assure you that some of the other concerns, staff received 80 hours of holiday pay when we were working five, eight-hour days, and we still receive 80 hours of holiday pay even though we're working 410s. The years where there's not enough holidays falling on Monday through Thursday, we will add that extra time period to vacation pay. And the years where there's more than 80 hours, we will forfeit that holiday. So we always stay at 80 hours of holiday pay. And also, the trend toward the 410 schedules in local government. I think a few more have come on board since we proposed the trial in January. Avondale was the leader in this. Queen Creek has now approved continuing their 410s through June 30 of 2010, and then they're going to proceed on a year-by-year basis. So their council will review it every year to see whether they want to continue or not. And towns that adopted it with no trial period at all was Buckeye, Eloy, Payson, and Pine Top Lakeside. And Mesa is currently in a trial period through the end of the year, and they will evaluate it at that time as to whether they'll continue it in 2010. So what's next? Like I said earlier, the council requested that we do a trial period and that we report back to you at the end of that, and that's what we're doing tonight. So we will be happy to answer any questions that you might have.
Thank you very much, Joan. Good job covering everything. All right. Council? Yeah. Anyone for the public? Thank you, Henry.
No, ma'am.
No? Thank you. All right. I'm sorry, go ahead. Councilmember Dickey?
If you'd like, I could make a motion.
Yeah, make a motion. Thank you.
I'd suggest that we... I mean, I move we approve a permanent change to town hall business hours by lengthening the hours' operation Monday through Thursday, 7:00 a.m. to 6:00 p.m., closing the town hall on Friday.
How about a second?
Second.
All right. Discussion. Councilmember Hanson.
Thank you. Joan, do you have the breakdown on the employee and the customer surveys? On the employee survey, it was 79% that wanted to keep it, and they didn't care. Can you break that down into how many wanted to keep it and how many didn't care?
I... Off the top of my head, I didn't bring those figures with me, but I know for the employees, there was 73% that wanted to keep the 410s. And with the outside customers, our residents, it was approximately 50% that wanted to stay with the 410s, and the remaining were neutral.
35 then?
Yes.
From the 85. Okay. Anybody else?
Thank you. Councilmember Dickey?
A question. Do you know if there's been any less doctor appointments, absenteeism, or anything like that? Were you able to distinguish a difference?
I think it's too soon to tell that, although I... Some of the comments that we received from employees is that they have missed less time because they scheduled their doctor's appointments on a Friday. I know speaking personally, I've done that. So they are missing less time, you know, during... From Monday through Thursday to do that. I've also heard some comments that there are some physicians and dental offices that aren't open on Fridays, so that prohibits them from doing that. So it may be a wash. I'm not sure.
Thank you.
Councilmember Contino? Bless you.
Yes, thank you, Mayor. Joan, on some of these survey results you have, the affecting the marriage, how many do you have of that one?
I only had one that made that comment on there.
Okay. Inconvenience for daycare?
Two. And I think that we've satisfied those. One of the employees brings her children to work in the morning for a short period of time, and they're in the break room or whatever, and then she takes a break to take them to school in the morning. So it was only the morning hours where it was an issue, and we've accommodated that with her. The other employee is still working on Fridays to accommodate his daycare.
Okay. I guess I'm really concerned about the street workers being out there in summertime and all that heat. That's tough to take. I'm out every day, and I know how hot it gets out there, especially when they're working on the asphalt.
Right.
And I think that's one thing we need to really sit back and take a look at. Parks and Rec went to eight-hour days, and I think that maybe we should consider streets going to eight-hour days to compensate for that. Also, I was concerned about the customer service. I had a citizen come to me and say that one of the employees said that they work four hours a day, and they don't have enough time to get everything done now. And I sit back and say, what are we talking about? And it was an issue of someone trying to get a license or a permit done, and the lady came back out and says, I only work four hours a day. How much more do you want? So I'm sitting back saying, you know, these are some things. I did a personal survey, and about three out of four out of 90-some people said... Of citizens, I'm not... By employees, citizens said they didn't want the eight-hour days. And so I have to sit back and take a look at that. The other thing was that... And I'm not against this. I'm just saying this is what is coming back to me as feedback. Also, the thing that is troublesome is the air handlers. They run 24/7, don't they?
They do, but they're... But the facilities is able to control those, so they can shut them down in the second floor so the temperature, like in the summertime, is much warmer and in the wintertime, you know, so they can control that. There's two handlers, one for the first floor and one for the second floor.
Okay. But in doing that, when it comes time for Monday morning and the building is so hot, how much harder do those have to work all day to get that temperature back to where it's supposed to be, up or down? That's another concern of mine. And I think the other thing that bothers me a lot is the idea that we don't have enough of a handle on costs and everything. And I would like to see, Mr. Mayor, we sit back and continue this trial period till the end of the year so we can get a cost figure, and we can get more employees saying, boy, this is really rough on me, or I really enjoy it. I think this trial period has been a short period, and I think like some of the other cities that she talked about, continue that. And I think I'd like to see that continue to the end of the year.
Appreciate it. Thank you. Councilmember Lojai. Should we flip a coin? No. No coins. Is that your question?
No. No, I don't have any... I don't have any coins. With respect to the motion, the motion was for... Let me look at it here. It was for permanent, and I don't feel comfortable with permanent. I would feel comfortable with amending the motion to approve this for a year and then reevaluate it at the end of the year with a criteria that throughout that year period, we had periodic reports on cost savings and customer service. I'm also concerned about... on cost savings and customer service. I'm also concerned about, initially, I was thinking about extending a trial period, and, you know, I think I'd like to get a snapshot of a whole year on this, so I'll just put that out there for others to entertain. It would actually be a trial period, it'd just be an extended trial period for a year, and then we can just reevaluate. And I noticed that one of the communities is doing that. Is that correct? Queen Creek?
Queen Creek, yes.
And to me, that would be the best of both worlds. Initially, I was thinking of just doing it throughout the summer to get a better handle on the air conditioning costs, because I think that's what will be our largest savings. But it's been brought to my attention by a couple of staff that, you know, their lives are kind of in limbo, too, working on this so-called trial periods. And I think that maybe we kill two birds. Well, I don't particularly enjoy killing birds with stones, but I think we're able to give permanency to their lives for a year, but at the same time, address concerns about continuing to evaluate, which is really the only feedback that I'm receiving from citizens. They'd like a little more time to evaluate, particularly cost savings and such. So I just put that out to the group that we look at, a year period of time, and come back and reevaluate. Thank you, Mayor.
All right. Is that an amendment? Are you looking to amend the motion?
I think Councilman Arshimbo, I think, had commented on the current.
Well, that's what, that's what my question was. Are you amending the motion? I don't think I understood.
Okay, well, I'll, I'll amend the motion to move to approve a change in town hall business hours by lengthening the hours of operation Monday through Thursday to 7:00 a.m. to 6:00 p.m., closing the town hall on Fridays for a period of one year, to be evaluated annually with quarterly reports regarding cost savings and levels of customer service.
Second?
Second, yeah. All right, so we have a motion and amended motion. Is that right, Andrew? A little more discussion, then we can take a vote on it. Is that correct?
Just vote on the amended motion after discussion.
Okay, and then back to the main?
And back to the main question.
Thank you. Councilmember Dickey on the amendment?
Mayor, on the amendment, I think that, I understand the idea about looking at the cost savings, but I think that the, that, you know, there were four items that we looked at, four issues that we looked at, and cost savings was one of them. Now, again, it didn't come out to what we expected. We probably expected it to be around $7,000 because we originally thought $14,000. But that's, you know, that's just a clear, you know, there was some mess up with the equipment or whatever. But I think it's, you know, really intuitive that it's gonna cost, it's gonna save money. That's, and that's good. And I don't, and I'm not opposed to finding out at the end of the year how much maybe our electric bills went down. But I don't see that as the only, or, you know, the only or the main reason why we're doing this. One of the things we talked about was, that you mentioned, was their life being in limbo, the staff. And I like the idea that they can plan ahead, they can know if somebody is, say, in Coanis, and they want to take a treasurer, be president, or do something like that. I think that we should give them the opportunity to make those commitments now, knowing that they, yes, you know, they are, they are busy until 6 o'clock every night, so they can do this or they can't do that. Or if they want to go to their child's school and work in the classroom every Friday, that they know now that they can commit to that. I just think it's considerate of our employees to just make this change. I mean, permanent is a word. Obviously, nothing we do binds anybody forever and ever. And at this, at this point, the other thing that we talked about is part of your job in human resources is recruiting. And I think that having Green Fridays is a recruiting tool. It can be used. And I, and not to say, well, we're doing it now, but we might not be doing it June 30th, because it could help, you know, vote tent, because it could help people make a decision on whether they would want to come here or not. So I would really prefer, and given that majority of those cities that we looked at, and there's more than that, and there's an entire state that does this, that, I think that I would really be prepared to make this a permanent change.
Thank you. Councilmember Hanson? Thank you.
I think we need to keep in mind that there's, people are happy with it now. If the construction, hopefully, starts picking up again, this could have an impact on construction people, on builders, you know, having to wait three days to get a building permit. And that's why I'm with Henry as far as, you know, permanent, you know, just, you know, and what's wrong with reevaluating it on an annual basis? Because you never know what's gonna change from year to year that might impact it.
Go to a three-day week. What would you call that Thursday? I'm just kidding. Getting late. Thanks, Mayor.
Thank you, Mayor. I just want to clarify that, as I understood Councilman Legay's motion, that he wanted a quarterly report, certainly not in front of the council, but just a quarterly report in, in some type of a format that we get, that this is where we're at now, this is what we've done so far. Or I don't want to burden staff with additional paperwork. I already know how burdened you guys are now, especially with the budget cuts that are coming down from the Senate. You know, I don't want to overwork everybody, but is that doable, Joan? Is it?
Certainly. Anything that the council requests, and we can, we can, we'd be glad to bring it before the council at a meeting, or we can just do it in a memo form to update you quarterly, whatever you would like us to do.
That's from Legay. I'm sorry.
Yeah, I'm sorry. I'm encouraged with the results that we've gotten so far. You know, the 15% increase that we've seen between those two hours of operations that we're now opening, open, I think will probably increase from that as we go. It's taken people a little bit of time to get used to it. Took me a little bit of time to get used to it. I'd pick up the phone on Friday, and I'm like, why isn't anybody answering their phone? Forget, you know. But it's encouraging to see that we're helping to do our part, especially with 70,000 pounds of pollutants, not putting that into the air. This is gonna help Maricopa County as a whole. And I like the idea that we review it every year, you know, just let's take a look at it. Maybe next year we decide to make it permanent, but I think we need to have something. We need to get everybody's lives stabilized. I think staff needs to know which direction we're gonna go. So I think a year is a doable for everybody, and I think it's a good compromise. Thank you.
Thank you very much. All right. Want to move on the motion? We got a motion and a second on the amendment to the motion, amendments to do it for a year. All in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye? Opposed?
No.
All right. Any more discussion on the main motion, or call Councilmember Hanson?
Just one thing that still kind of concerns me about this is that it's being portrayed as a benefit, and that a lot of employees like it. But it's not being offered to everybody. So I mean, there is the perception that some employees are getting a benefit that's not available to all employees, and I have a little problem with that.
Maybe just to alleviate some of your, with that, is that it is being offered to everybody, and we're not requiring anybody. The community center, of course, is open seven days a week, but they do have the opportunity to rotate. So, you know, half of the staff could work Monday through Thursday, and the other half Tuesday through Friday, or something like that, so that everybody would have one day off. Parks have the same option to do that. They've just chosen not to. One of the reasons is because of the heat in the summer, and they wanted to be available. Streets will have that option, too. It won't affect the utilities because they're out in the field most of the day anyway. They're not in their building and running their equipment and things. But I can't think of anybody that doesn't have the option to work the four-tens if they choose to do so.
Thank you.
Did you have somebody in mind, a particular department, or?
No, but like, well, just the street department. Would, would they be able to say, you know, individually, could they make the choice whether to work, you know, five-eight?
I think that would be up to, you know, the director of the department to do that, but I, from talking with them, it seems feasible because they have certain responsibilities that they have. And with, I think we're cutting back on the, for instance, the landscaping contract this next fiscal year, and it's been discussed that maybe some of the street department would pick up that workload because they're cutting back on the crack ceiling in the summertime because of the heat and things. So we can try and transfer the workload over to realize the cost savings, and they would have that, and we'd have work for them to do, so they could realize that.
But I guess that department kind of stands up more because they are outside. And like Dennis said, in the summer, you know, with the heat. But then in the winter as well, it, you know, the days are so short. So, you know, they come to work in the dark, and they go home in the dark, and they're working in the dark. So that, that just seems to maybe present some challenges.
But so this, what you're saying is this would allow the leadership in that department to, if they, if they see that as a need, this, we're not holding them to four-tens?
That's correct.
Okay.
Mayor, if I may. I think the, my philosophy on the evaluations to Councilman Arshimbo's inquiry is that, you know, this is still relatively new. I think that there are some things that can be worked out. I think, as my experience with doing these types of things in different environments is that you're constantly evaluating it, and, you know, you're looking for ways to continually improve the program. And as you stated, Joan, creating latitude for leaders to do different things and get creative. And that's kind of my spirit in terms of continually evaluating it. And I think we'll find probably more benefits if we're, if we're looking at this as we go forward. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you very much. All right. Want to move on to the main motion? All in favor indicate by saying aye. Aye? Opposed?
Mayor, six-zero.
Thank you very much. Anything from the town manager? Thank you, Joan.
Thank you.
Just a reminder that I will not be here the next council meeting. Julie Getty will be here instead. And I regret to inform you that I'll be at scout camp, so.
No brush cuts, right?
What was that?
No brush cuts?
No. But I've never been to a scout camp, so this will be, unless you count a Holiday Inn as a scout camp.
I would. Thank you. I think there's a letter to, I've got a note here, give a letter, I think former councilmember Melendez, get a letter to our county supervisor's office, looking for assistance to, on the STS-type program for funding of such. And then also, I thought it'd be a good idea if the speaker cards, I just think it's good to keep as much contact information for those that are impacted by this program going away. Make sure we have their contact information if we have information to pass along to those folks that were here, or that shared their name, or additional information through speaker cards that we may already have the information for. That's just a thought for tonight. And then that, look for a motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn.
Second, all right. First, second, discussion. All in favor indicate by saying aye. Aye? Thanks. Opposed? Thank you for staying so late.